End session. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember O'Kane?
Here.
Mayor Baker?
Here.
Member Marshall?
Present.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Here.
Councilmember File?
Here.
Councilmember Kugler?
You will all please join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the Republic. For which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible.
Liberty and justice for all.
If there are no objections, the agenda will stand approved as written and published. Next item on the agenda, Mr. City Manager.
Hi.
Are you going to do the honors?
Yes, please. All right, we have a special guest here today, and I need to stop using the word guest because she's one of us. And her name is Leonora Palagna, and there you can see her there on the screen. She's our brand new human resources manager. And hi. And she just started today. Today's her first day at work. And and we are having her come and say hi to you and introduce her to you. And as you know, this is a new position that you authorized in the budget and that we also projected in our forecasting for the Financial Sustainability Plan. And this position has two main responsibilities, and that is management of human resources in the city of Kenmore, which we have desperately needed over the years, especially increasingly over the years. And then in addition to that, Leonora is going to run point for us on the diversity equity and inclusion programs and policies that we'll be installing, including the public outreach and all those things that will be happening later this year. So those will be her two main jobs, human resources and diversity equity and inclusion. But just a little bit of background on Leonora, she comes to us from the port of Seattle where she was for 13 years in their human resources department. She did a lot of things there in HR. She really kind of specialized in talent acquisition and onboarding and things like that. And prior to working at the Port of Seattle, she was the Human Resources Manager in New York City for Times Square, W Times Square Hotel. And before working at the W Times Square Hotel, she was the Human Resources Manager for the W Hotel in Seattle. And previous work experiences include social services, working and volunteering with several community-based organizations, and much more. She was born and raised here in the Seattle area. And she ended up graduating, you ready for this? From Inglemore High School. Yeah. And then she also graduated from the University of Washington. And last but not least, are you ready for this last little fact? She is a Kenmore resident. Yeah, now what are the odds of that? Because I mean, we did a nationwide search. We put it out all over the place advertising this position, and she had really stiff competition, a lot of really qualified people applied for this job, and it was it was really hard to narrow it down, but she rose to the top. So we're just really excited to have her. Leonora, do you want to say anything?
Yes, thank you, Rob. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. I just want to express my sincere gratitude and appreciation for being hired for this position. This really means a lot, and you probably heard that quote, my favorite quote by George Moore. A man travels the world over in search of what he needs and returns home to find it. So it's really nice to be back home in Kenmore, where I grew up, where I graduated from high school. And so going into this position really means a lot to me. And thank you so very much in your selection process. I have nothing but humble gratitude and appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you. We're really glad to have you with us. You are joining a great group of people. I think you will find out from another recent new hire in Letitia that we have a fabulous group of people, and I think you're really going to enjoy working here, and we're so, so glad to have you. So thank you.
Thank you.
For coming and interviewing for the position. And we hope you're happy here.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Puget Sound, oh, before I forget, please let me let me take care of one thing that I should have done at the very beginning. And that is, I'd like to acknowledge that we're on the traditional land of the first people of Kenmore. And honor with gratitude the land itself and the Koshe Salis people who thrive in this place alive and strong. Now I'd like to welcome the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency Air Sensor Lending Program with guest Air Quality Division Director Kathy Strange. Strange, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. It's good to be here. Thank you for having me tonight. I think I was told I can share my screen. I believe that Anastasia sent out a few slides, so let me try and share my screen, although when I do so, I probably won't be able to see you. See, you might have to give me an audio cue. Your question. So let's see. Okay, are you seeing my screen?
Yes, we are.
Okay, excellent. All right, so I am here tonight to talk with you about our air monitoring sensor lending program. And I am told I have about 10 minutes on the agenda, and I put together a few background slides. And I will just dive into those, walk through those, and I hope to have a few minutes at the end to answer questions as well. There it goes in advance. All right, so I put in this slide initially, it's labeled health effects of fine particle pollution. And the reason I put this in is because the monitoring network, I'm going to be talking with you about briefly tonight, all the monitors you're going to see on the maps measure fine particle pollution. And you might be wondering why all the focus on this particular pollutant, given that there are many different pollutants in the world. So fine particle pollution, PM 2.5, the 2.5 stands for 2.5 microns in diameter or less. So the picture you can see there is a human hair and a PM 2.5 is basically the pink circle. So it's 2.5 microns in diameter or less, so roughly 1/30th the width of a human hair. They're very small. Their very small size means that we can inhale them very deeply into our lungs. And that we, there's a very well-established body of evidence related to respiratory and cardiac health impacts of PM 2.5 pollution. So that is why we focus on this particular pollutant. I also mentioned in the slide, there is an increase in potential cancer risk with exposure to fine particle pollution. This is especially true for diesel. Diesel particle pollution, so these would be fine particles that come from combustion of diesel fuel. And there are a host of other studies that show more systemic impacts coming from fine particle pollution, things like cognitive impacts, reproductive, neurological, etc. Those are just not as well established as the body of evidence related to respiratory and cardiovascular. Some of you may have actually seen some of the studies this year that explored and looked at the association between PM 2.5 levels and increased adverse COVID-19 outcomes. So I'm sure we'll continue to learn more as time goes on. If you're wondering now, where does fine particle pollution come from? It basically comes from combustion. So that could be combustion of different fuels. It could be combustion of wood. It can be combustion of diesel fuel or gasoline fuel in an internal combustion engine. It could be combustion of a fuel in an industrial process. So basically, most sources of fine particle pollution are combustion. So by way of background, the Clean Air Agency, we're a four-county agency, and we have multiple functions. But one of our functions is that we do maintain an ambient air quality monitoring program. And so you see here a map, and the circles that you see on that map are basically our fixed site monitoring network. So that means we have a fixed regulatory site there monitoring PM 2.5 pollution. And really, the primary objective of this is to, of the history of this monitoring network, is to establish compliance with the national ambient air quality standards. There are six pollutants that EPA has set national ambient air quality standards for. So this monitoring network shows us that we are either in compliance or not in compliance with these health-based standards. And so again, PM 2.5 is not only the one associated with the most public health impacts. It also is the one that we tend to be closest to those national ambient air quality standards. And in recent times, we have been in violation of those and came up with plans to get back into attainment of those federal standards. So we're now in attainment with all those federal standards across our jurisdiction. There's a lot of secondary objectives that we use this monitoring network for. Those include using the levels for our air quality forecast that we post on our website and provide to people. We also use it for forecasting our burn bands or winter time season burn bands for education and outreach. Researchers use the data from our fixed site network, looking at trends in air pollution levels over time and even over decades. So it serves a lot of, they serve a lot of secondary functions, these monitors. They're also very resource-intensive. So you can see we have roughly a dozen monitors over four counties, and that is in part because they are just, they're very expensive to purchase. They're in the tens of thousands of dollars per monitor. And then to maintain them to, you know, establish the right level of quality control, quality assurance is also very, it's labor-intensive. So the history of the fixed site monitor. So now if we advance to the next slide, this is the same geographic area. And you can see on the slide that, wow, there's a lot more circles now. And so what those circles are, those are sensors. So what these sensors are, these are not the fixed, the fixed site monitors now that were the circles before, now these appear as stars in this map. You can tell there are a lot more circles, and these circles are these small inexpensive sensor monitors that show us fine particle pollution levels. Depending on the sensor, a lot of times they use the same underlying technology as some of the more expensive sensors. But just their sheer the cost makes it so, we can have such a greater spatial resolution for these monitors than was possible before. And this is really a recently emerging field, like this, this map would not have been possible five years ago. This map right now, this map is showing the Purple Air Sensors, Purple Air is a certain brand. You can find this on our website, and what we do is we scrape the data from that Purple Air website, and we do a correlation between the nearest regulatory monitor to try and adjust the level of of the sensors. So there's a little bit of more quality assurance on our site than just going to, for example, the Purple Air website. And the main, the main objective for these is they're not, they're not regulatory level of accuracy. They don't have the same level of rigor, obviously, of the quality assurance. But they are, they have been extremely helpful for outreach and education and community engagement. So for example, when somebody is asking about air quality, they've been much more excited to see a sensor that's, you know, very nearby their house than, for example, a fixed site sensor that's further away. So it's very helpful in that way. Which leads me to the next slide, which is really our sensor lending program. So what this program is, a couple of years ago, we started developing a little library of some of these sensors. And you can see the three main ones that we have at the bottom, the one on the lower left is the Purple Air, and that's the one that you just saw the map for. Purple Air Sensors, these tend to be stationary, people tend to install these and then fix, they hook up to your Wi-Fi basically, and then they go to that website, and then again, we can, we can access that, those data as well. The one in the middle here, this is a dialloze, and the one on the right is an airbeam. These all again measure fine particle pollution. These two on the right tend to be more handheld. So people that are interested, a lot of times we have, like, for example, school groups that will be interested in, hey, I want to hold a monitor, take a walk around my neighborhood, I want to walk around at different times of day, see if I see differences. Those are more handheld versus more stationary. On the right here, you see this is a screenshot from our website, and the screenshot is basically showing the lending application form. And one of the main pieces that we're looking for in this application form is, you know, what are you looking for? What's your question? How do you plan to use these data? And so that's one of the key things that we're looking at in terms of criteria when, when we evaluate the applications, because for example, if somebody says, well, I'm interested in carbon monoxide levels, or I'm really interested in volatile organic compounds, or I'm really interested in something else that we simply, we don't have those sensors, then we can, that's, that's a different conversation than, well, I'm going to send you a PM 2.5 sensor and expect it to answer your question because it fundamentally can't. Another main criteria is where, where people are planning to monitor and where they're planning to use the sensor. Our agency has a very strong objective and focus around equity. And so we'll be looking at the neighborhoods where we feel like equity is most served, placing these air, air sensors in this lending program. So that's another key criterion that we evaluate when we look at these applications. To date, we have loaned out about 20 of these sensors. So again, it's a fairly new program. And along with receiving the sensors, we don't just, you know, give the sensors and say goodbye. We, we have a lot of dialogue with the individuals or community groups that have them so that they understand how to use them. We sometimes have helped them refine their study questions, and then we also can help them to interpret their data once they've monitored for their study, so we can help them with their, their kind of conclusions and findings as well. And so with that, those are the slides that I had, and I know I received actually a couple of email questions earlier today, so I can pull those up to start with. So let me end slideshow. And then. Perfect. I'm going to pull up these questions here that I received via email. So the first one was, thank you for the questions. Is there a device that can measure VOCs and CO2? And so we have not, again, I noted that we really focus on fine particle pollution because of its health impacts, and those are really the monitors that we have focused on. And we don't have in our library, nor am I aware of devices that would measure well in ambient air, those pollutants. So the short answer to that one is no. The second question is, when testing, will the device log GPS location, time and location stamp? And really, it depends on the device. I should have mentioned that these devices are pretty time-resolved. So there's a lot of time-resolved information that we get from all of them. I think the Purple Air will upload data every, it's every couple of minutes. The dialloze, I think, is every seven minutes or so. So there's a lot, there's a lot of date stamps. And then in terms of the time and location, really that airbeam, the blue one on the right, is the one that it actually syncs up with a phone and gives you a little map of where you've been. So that's the one where the GPS, I think, is kind of the most, the most relevant, where people are really looking into spatial differences. And then the last question was, when testing with handheld devices, how hard is it to prove a correlation to a nearby issue? Or are the results mixed due to a hard to prove, due to hard to prove a correlation? And this is a, that's a big question. And I think I mentioned earlier that PM 2.5 is basically the result of combustion, because we have combustion sources, and particularly in an urban area all around. It's very difficult to identify specifically what sources the PM 2.5 would be coming from. So if you were looking for something more nuanced, that would definitely be well beyond the scope of, you know, a sensor lending program type scope. It would go into something much more resolved, or much more involved, like a like a methods development type of grant with a university. So I will stop there and see what other questions people have on the lending program. Oh, yes.
That's where we're Marshall.
Those, take a little bit of a broader view, and thank you for the presentation. What are the six pollutants that you do regulate, and then do the sensors catch any of those?
The six criteria pollutants, I knew somebody asked this question. So it's particle pollution, carbon monoxide, lead, sulfur dioxide, ozone. What's the last one? Did I say CO already? I did say CO. Sulfur dioxide. And the answer is, I'll think of that sixth one, I always forget one, is we do not actively monitor for any of the other ones. The other one that we tend to be close to the health-based standard is ozone. Ozone is a summertime pollutant, and Department of Ecology monitors for ozone in our jurisdiction. So we have not been on attainment for ozone for quite some time. I'm going to Google six, I'm like, why am I forgetting the last one? The criteria pollutants, but really, the only one that we actively monitor at our rate, at our regular fixed sites is fine particle pollution. And I should mention that there actually is also coarse particle pollution, which is PM 10, and in the past, this is, this is more of a dust occurrence. So that's another one that we've had problems with historically, but now it's really more the smaller resolution, and also the smaller resolution because it can be inhaled so deeply, is the greater health impacts in the PM 10.
Any other questions?
Oh, I, I'm sorry, it's nitrogen dioxide. That's the sixth one that I was forgetting. And actually, nitrogen dioxide and volatile organic compounds, those combine to make ozone. So there's a bit of interplay between some of the pollutants.
Um, the small inexpensive sensors that are available now. Any of those from Microsoft?
Oh, are they made by Microsoft?
Yeah, because Microsoft's got some new sensors that we have scattered around town. I'm wondering if you guys are utilizing them yet.
Um, we, what do? I don't believe, not the three that we're using. Now that said, I, I highlighted the three that we're using in the program. There are actually many new entrants to this field. South Coast is another air quality agency in Southern California, and they have a sensor lab. And so our technical team has gotten some of these and kind of played with them, if you will, and seen like how robust and if they have the resolution to monitor ambient air. So I will say that the Microsoft ones are not in our lending program. The three that we have are the three that you saw, the, the Purple Air, the airbeam and the dialloze, but that doesn't mean in the future we might have more.
Are you testing any of the Microsoft ones? Like I said, we have a number installed in the city right now.
Do you know which, what they're, what the name is, other than just the, I mean?
The exact model number, no.
Okay.
And I'm looking at staff, and I don't see anybody from staff here that would perhaps know.
If it helps, they look like a leaf.
Yeah, like a maple.
Hmm.
You can see them up on our light poles and traffic.
With the, with the leaf clue, I think that our technical analysis team would probably be like, oh, yeah, that's that one. So there are a couple, there's another one that like, looks like an egg, like, I know we've looked at, like, so I, I can definitely follow up with Eric Seganich, who's our technical analyst manager.
Curiosity. Mr. City Manager, you have a question?
I think Councilmember Kugler had a question before me.
That's remember Kugler.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. Is the application process competitive? Like, are there very few monitors to go across how many applicants are applying?
That is a great question. Competitive is such a strong word. What ends up limiting it are two things. Number one, the limitation is if fundamentally the monitor isn't going to address the question. So it's not a one-to-one, like, we haven't received only 20 applications. We've received more than 20, and we've only loaned out 20. And so it's because either A, we fundamentally, that's, that's usually the reason, is that they're just not interested in the question that a PM 2.5 sensor can help resolve. The other reason would be, it's not the number of devices, that's the critical terms of resource, because they are fairly cheap. More the critical path is our staff time, because I mentioned that we actually don't want to just like give you the monitor and say, good luck with that, and hope you have a good experience. Like, we actually try to stay in touch and help with data interpretation, etc. So that's actually more the critical path. I think we're reaching a phase, though, we actually have done fairly limited like advertising, if you will, of this. So I think we're slowly starting to build up enough muscle memory and have enough capacity to slowly, you know, start advertising it more, to take on a few more. But at any given time, we usually try and only take on a few because we're allocating, like, who the contact person is with that community group among a small cadre of staff that, that kind of have this on their, on their plates.
Okay, great. Can I ask a couple of follow-ups? And that is, is there a time period, like a set time period, that we're able to borrow the monitors for, or is that dependent on what is being proposed?
It's very dependent on what's being proposed. So for example, we've had school groups that have just said, hey, we just want them for a couple of days because we're going to be walking around in these areas on these days with, with kids. And then we've had people that have said, I'm really interested in the seasonal variation in my neighborhood. And I think that wood smoke is really impacting me, and I would love to get them early in the wood stove season, and then even continue on beyond the wood stove season. And so we've been able to accommodate there, like, there's no hard set, it has to be less than this amount of time.
Okay, great. And then my final question is, are there examples of other cities or current current organizations who are borrowing the sensors? And like examples of innovative projects or requests that they're doing, is that shared on the website or anywhere that we might be able to see?
That's a good question. We, well, the answer is no, we don't have it on the website. We just have a little blurb on the website. And again, I think we've been kind of doing our soft launch on this, just to see like how it goes and how we can tweak either the application process or the program before we, I don't want to say open the floodgates, because I don't know if everybody wants a monitor. But we have had, in terms of like the typical, I would say we tend to have, the most typical request that we've had have been educators and school groups that usually are interested in the airbeams or the dialloze, the handheld in a classroom setting. And this was, this was pre-COVID in that setting. And then the other one, I think we've had a lot of people interested in wood smoke. So I feel like we've had individuals that have, you know, had the questions of, is my, is my, are my levels worse in the evening? Or are they worse during the day? Is there, is there a diurnal pattern? Is there a seasonal pattern? Other people have wanted them, they've said, hey, I've looked at your website, and I see that you have a monitor, you know, you know, in Linwood, or I, or I see you have one in Lake Forest Park, but I want to know, I'm many miles from this one, I would like to see how my monitor compares to that monitor. So I feel like there's been a lot of individuals and a lot of, a lot of educators. And when I say a lot, it's still within 20, so there's not really a huge a huge set right now.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you. Thank you very much for coming out tonight.
Yeah, thank you all for your attention and questions.
All right. Next item on the agenda, public comments. And we want to welcome our community members to the council meeting. In this forum, the council cannot engage or dialogue with the public. The primary role of the council is to listen. All comments must be addressed to the mayor and city council. Please use the raised hand feature if you wish to speak. The clerk will acknowledge your request and call your name when it is your turn. Your time will start when we confirm we can hear you. Please state your name, city of residence for the record, and keep your comments to the allotted time. Your time cannot be granted to another, and your clock time will not be reset unless there's extenuating circumstances and the presiding officer has expressly allowed it. Screen sharing is not allowed. You can submit materials to the council or clerk in advance, and this meeting is being recorded. And we thank you for taking the time to express your comments. Will the clerk please call the first person?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to announce that we're going to take the first group in this order, Janet Hayes, Stacy V., Rose H., David Morton, David Dorian, and Patrick O'Brien. Ms. Hayes, can you hear us? Janet Hayes, can you hear us?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, we hear you.
My name is Janet Hayes and I'm a resident in Kenmore. And I had a que, question came up today. Does the city of Kenmore use the same criteria as Puget Sound Clean Air Agency when they are answering questions from non-residents in Kenmore or a complaint? Do we keep a log of the information that someone say from Lake Forest Park might call in and ask what that is? I've run into people on the Burke Gilman Trail who would like to know who to call. But they've, they don't get through when they call the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency. Because basically they're not a resident of Kenmore. I'm wondering if Ken, city of Kenmore keeps a log of that. Also, I I've got a little list here. In September, when we had a meeting with Rob Carlinsey, a Zoom meeting, September 18th, Rob had mentioned that he had sent out flyers to people in the targeted area. And that it in targeted communities, which was a very few people. I did not receive that message for the meeting. I found out about the meeting on my own. But if you want people to be involved in Kenmore and activities and events and volunteering projects, the entire population of Kenmore needs to be sent postcards like the one that was sent out for people that were affected by the asphalt. Anyone who shops, dines, goes to the library, goes to see their doctor at Evergreen or any of the numerous medical facilities, they actually experience the asphalt smell also. So I think that has to be corrected. Instead of just a targeted community, you need to include the whole of Kenmore. We all pay taxes. And that's all I have to say for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Stacy V.
Good evening. Stacy Valenzuela from Kenmore. We request that PSCA Ecology Washington, the city of Kenmore, provide and fund to have the emissions tested from the Kenmore Asphalt Company. As explained by David Morton, chemistry PhD, we need more than particle testing. We request testing via the Tenax dissorbent tubes of the ambient air through the independent company and continual monitoring. At the fence line on the Burke Gilman Trail near the company where the emissions blow into walkers and riders' faces and possibly on 181st through 185th at 61st, 62nd, 64th and 68th, where residents have continually reported air order and quali- quality complaints where the stack emissions is active to verify what the VOCs and PHAs in our residents are being exposed to. This request has been active for years. I will quote from our residents and tourists concerned on this on our petition of over 850 signatures from Redmond. I have noticed outdated facility and its heavy smoke and tar pit smell every time I walk the trail. From Woodenville, I don't want air blowing in my backyard. It's not good for the health. From Seattle, do the test or shut it down. From Bothell, clean air should be a human right. From Kirkland, unacceptable that this facility's emissions go unchecked. From Kenmore, I consistently smell the stench of this industry wherever I go in the Burke Gilman. Anything that smells this bad needs to be tested and followed up on. We know that several other residents have emailed, posted on Kenmore Washington government or resident concerns and spoke to the state and county at meetings. Climate change is a time to recognize the wrong that was done in the past. Learn how they hurt our lands, waters and people and move past them by taking action to fix the wrong. We also would like our council members to remember that they represent us, the residents, not their own agendas. It's time to acknowledge and show us by full disclosure of any conflict of interest or agreements with any organization, club or agency that fails to put us, the public first. Thank you.
Rose. Rose H.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Rose Hendricks. I live in Kenmore, calling in today to sort two things. One is the DEI initiative and the other is say word in support of radar. I think it's a step in the right direction in the ongoing unbundling of emergency response. It wasn't that long ago that police handled medical crises as well until paramedics became widespread. I think we can all agree that was a good thing. And I think that having a single group of people who are responding to every crisis is not a sensible way to run a society. And so I think that radar is a great step in the right direction and I wanted to support its usage here in Kenmore. That is all I had to say. Thank you so much. Everybody get vaccinated.
Thank you. David Morton. David Morton.
Hey, good evening, council members. I'm David Morton. I live near Redmond. Cadman Asphalt Plant in Kenmore is a heavy industrial facility located near residential areas. But it shows that the plant has been receiving tank trucks full of medium cure cutback asphalt containing kerosene, a hazardous, toxic and carcinogenic solvent, and has been evaporating tons of solvent chemicals into the air. Some Kenmore residents who live downwind from the plant have described incidents in which their homes have been blanketed by a cloud of petroleum vapors, causing them to suffer ill health effects and leaving a lingering layer of oily material on surfaces and on themselves. Cadman has been recklessly endangering the health and welfare of its neighbors and creating a substantial risk of serious physical harm to people. Cadman may not have intended the resulting or potential harm, but has acted in a way that shows a disregard for the foreseeable consequences of their actions. The community has a right to know what hazardous and poisonous air pollutants are emitted by the plant and in what amounts. In the 1990s, the US government sponsored a research project called the Strategic Highway Research Program, which developed new standards for asphalt binders called performance grade or PG binders. In the late 1990s, hot mix asphalt or HMA processes that use no solvents were used by 11 strictly controlled HMA facilities that were monitored for a few years and their hazardous air pollutant emissions were measured. Consequently, in 2002, the EPA officially removed asphalt plants from the list of major sources of air pollution on the condition that HMA facilities shall use solvent-free binders. EPA document AP42 lists emission factors for these HMA processes that use no solvents. For these emission factors to be applicable, asphalt plants must use these HMA process with no solvents. The AP42 emission factor used to estimate Cadman's VOC emissions is rated D before simply applying such an unreliable emission factor to predict or assess emissions from an asphalt plant. PSCAA should be taking care to assure that the plant's raw material inputs are those of the sources analyzed to produce the emission factors. Actual test data from the plant's asphalt binder tanks or from the plant's stack are better sources of information for permitting and regulating decisions than a D-rated AP42 emission factor. Thank you.
Thank you. David and Kira Dorian.
Hi there. Our name's David Dorian and Kira Dorian and we're residents of Kenmore. I would like to comment in the context of the annual police report, but I'd like to start with an analogy. We have a retirement crisis in the United States. Many trace the root of this crisis to the transition from defined benefit plans like pensions to defined contribution plans like 401Ks. In that transition, the well-being of American citizens in retirement was outsourced wholesale to the stock market. The problem with that is that the stock market was not designed to ensure well-being for ordinary citizens. It was designed to make wealthy people wealthier. Sure, in some cases, there is ethical and sustainable investing and in some cases 401Ks have proved successful in enabling retirement needs. But overall, the stock market doesn't function for the purpose of sustainability and well-being of ordinary people. So millions of Americans find themselves in crisis. We also have another crisis in America, one that is more pertinent to the meeting this evening, the crisis in community care and public safety. We have outsourced the well-being of at-risk individuals and groups in our communities to policing functions that were not designed to ensure their well-being, but in their history were often designed to oppress them. Sometimes, like with 401Ks and ethical investing, we might get lucky and find ourselves in a community where the policing functions innovate beyond their history to support community care for at-risk individuals and groups. I have both heard and experienced that Kenmore is such a community and we will no doubt hear about that this evening in the police services report. And in a difficult year, I'd like to thank our police officers for their service. However, we need to be honest with ourselves that such innovation is the exception in a national system not designed for that purpose. In the context of the retirement crisis, it's not controversial to suggest that we need to look beyond 401Ks and IRAs to enable well-being in retirement. And in the context of community care and public safety, it should not be controversial to suggest that we need to look beyond the police for solutions to community care and public safety. History has shown that we cannot expect the policing ecosystem to effectively regulate itself, just like Wall Street can't effectively regulate itself. And we should not expect improvements in community care and public safety from continuing to pump money and a lot of it into strategies we know are not meeting the needs of community well-being at scale. Just as pumping money into 401Ks and IRAs is not going to meet retirement well-being at scale. We pledge allegiance to the flag at the start of this meeting, so we acknowledge we're part of a national conversation. And we cannot solve the problems in the bubble of privilege that we're in and ignore the broader systemic issues that we face as a nation. So I encourage the council to look beyond that and see Kenmore's linked to a broader national crisis in community care and public safety. We have options. National groups are calling to divest federal resources from incarceration and policing and invest in new non-punitive, non-carceral approaches for community safety. There's a spectrum there. And for example, the Kahoots model is at a different point on the spectrum than our current radar program is. It's those sorts of differences that I ask the council to keep keen awareness on as well as to keep open minds on the options that exist to play a part in solving this national crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat O'Brien, Patrick O'Brien.
On it. Hi there.
Hello.
Pat O'Brien, Kenmore, Washington. Hello, council. I'd like you to drive down, wanting to drive and see the new signage going into St. Edward's Park. It doesn't say St. Edward's Park anymore. It says something entirely different and they've taken the spot of the state park's entryway banner or, or plaque. So go look at that and, and let's see how that got changed. I would like to talk about the stack samples. The, the, the Kenmore Asphalt Plant has been cited. They have many violations. They have over 800 complaint letters written against them. And there's a history of Puget Sound Clean Air doing nothing to curtail their activity or methods. So what we'd like to see is the violations that they've, they've, they've had and is a crime because there's been obstruction, false statements, and there is environmental risk to the people that live around the asphalt plant. There are hazardous materials being released, not just, oh, let's find out how big the particulate is, even though that is dangerous. What is more dangerous is the list of chemical products that come out of that stack. And when everybody says, oh, we don't have any money to do that testing. Well, I assure you that when you've cited them for the list of activities they've done and done illegally, they are responsible for paying for that monitoring and it should be at the stack. And they should be checking for the, at least the 12 top cancer-causing chemicals that come out of any, any asphalt process, not just, you know, hot mix, warm mix, cold mix. All of them generate these carcinogenic materials. We have people on this road with cancer now. And we say, oh, we're going to do some spot monitoring. That isn't good enough. There's people at risk. And the city has a long history of saying, well, it's not our problem. It's Puget Sound Clean Air. And I've testified in Olympia where they actually defended the Asphalt Association and they sat next to the Asphalt Association when Jerry Palette tried to get legislation to monitor them. So we know the Puget Sound Clean Air is a farce and we'd like to see another agency take over and independently test for all the pollutants coming out of the plant. And we're absolutely sick of it. There's barges every day that they roll in tar and diesel and there, the volume is staggering. Barges and barges and the stack, the flume goes to City Hall. It comes to me, it affects everybody and you, city council, need to get that ended. Thank you.
Thank you. Finley, Phyllis Finley.
Phyllis Finley, Kenmore. My topic is finances. And it's a follow-up to my comments last week regarding the city's $40,000 payment to the North Shore Canoe and Kayak Club, which I will refer to as simply the club. Since last week, I've learned that the payment is a one-time, not an annual payment. I've also learned a few other things. The city of Kenmore is providing a private organization with the privilege of using its facilities rent-free. That just seems backwards from this taxpayer's point of view. For example, I'm quite sure that the state of Washington does not allow the Wilderness School to operate rent-free at St. Edward's State Park, pay them $40,000 for supplies and advertise for them, even though the school provides valuable programming for our state's children. In addition to using this public park rent-free, the city gave this private club $40,000 for acquisition, repair and maintenance of boats. Wait, there's more. The city shall promote and advertise club classes and include a link on the city's website to the club and will promote the club's special events in the city newsletter. In return for the rent-free use of the public park, $40,000 for boats and free advertising, what does the club agree to? In other words, what do the taxpayers of Kenmore get in return? The club agrees that their prices and membership fees will be competitive. Well, in a free market, wouldn't one expect them to cha, charge competitive prices? The club agrees to provide programming and instruction. Well, isn't that one would, what one would expect from this private club? The club agrees to organize park cleanup days, but they're not paying rent and they're being paid $40,000 for boats. There are volunteers who would be willing to organize and execute park cleanup at no charge. The club agrees to be responsible for its administrative functions, bookkeeping, for example. But for goodness sakes, it's their club. Who else would do this? The club agrees to appoint a head coach and have 12 students. Considering the nature of the private organization, isn't that what they would do anyway? The general population of taxpayers in the city of Kenmore is getting the short end of the stick with this contract, in my opinion, if I'm reading it correctly. I object to taxpayer dollars being used to support a private club regardless of whether or not our city is in a financial crisis. And regardless of whether or not the contract has been legally approved and regardless of whether or not the club's president is the mayor's wife. Thank you.
Thank you. Vicki Grayland. Vicki Grayland.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great. I'm so happy to be here. Council and mayor and honored guests, I'd like to comment on the air monitors. I live on 73rd and back in October during a contentious political campaign, one of my neighbors put up a sign saying, we, we like science towards that effect. And it really heartened me, you know, it, I felt that in my heart. And when I first heard about these air sensors from Puget Sound Clean Air Agency, I thought, wow, that's a great idea. But then when I looked at the PowerPoint that Ms. Strange presented, it says not used for compliance, not at regulatory level of accuracy. And because I am a pragmatic person, my question is, what's the point of doing this? If we can't use this for compliance, If we can't use this for compliance for the asphalt plant, isn't that what inspired asking for this? So if I were voting, I would vote against this. I don't really see, I think, I see it as a waste of time and energy. And I'd also like to comment on the city's climate action plan, the greenhouse gases document. Again, once again, it is not in compliance with what the city council requested last fall to talk about the industrial emissions. That industrial figure is just based on Puget Sound Energy records. It does not call into, take into consideration the trucked in chemicals that Cadman does on a weekly basis. I think we need to start at the base. We need to start with the truth. And we all know this is not truthful. And I'd also like to comment on emissions increased by 4% from 2017 to 2019. On a per capita basis, controlling for population growth, emissions increased by less than 1%. Well, is that a pat on the back for us for having more people? And more emissions? I don't think that's how Mother Nature measures this. Gee, per capita? Yeah, that's fine. So I think we need to be honest in our figures here. You know, data is very important, but we have to be completely clear and honest about this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mayor Baker. I see that Janet Hayes has raised her hand again. However, she was first to speak. I don't see any other additional hands raised. You're muted, mayor.
Yes, we allow each person to speak one time.
I see now Nancy Hansen has raised her hand. Can we take that comment, mayor?
Okay.
Ms. Hansen, can you hear us?
Yes, I'm muted now. Thanks. I would just, I agree with what everyone's saying about the measurement of toxins or whatever it is at the asphalt plant. I would like to have every council member go stand in front, like standing about south northeast of the plant, just a ways and stand there for an hour while they're working. And I think you'll start agreeing that there is a big problem. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no new hands raised.
Anybody else wishing to speak? Anybody else wishing to speak? Hearing no one coming forward. Public comment section is over. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved. Seconded.
Dan seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
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 Posed? Consent agenda stands approved unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the King County, countywide planning policies and growth targets presented by the Community Development Director, Mrs. Debbie Bent and the Principal Planner, Ms. Lori Anderson. I thought we had this last week.
No. It was, this is, it's also about the countywide policies, but this is a different presentation. And if I could ask the city clerk to please promote Rebecca Maskin and Karen Wolf, please, who are here from King County. And they have a presentation for us this evening. So I guess with no further ado, I'd like to introduce Rebecca and Karen. And I believe one of Rebecca or Karen will be sharing their screen to give a presentation to give some context for the changes to the countywide planning policies and growth targets. So I'll now turn the meeting over to Rebecca and Karen. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. We're excited to be here tonight and kind of go through the update of the countywide planning policies with you. So what we will do is give you kind of a, you know, a background, a little primer on the Growth Management Act and planning, so you get the context of where the CPPs fit. We'll talk about the Growth Management Planning Council. We'll go through some overviews of the general policy outline in each of the chapters. Go into a little more depth on growth targets and then finish up with the schedule. So with that, just again, to give you a little refresher on Growth Management Planning in Washington State. The Growth Management Act was established in 1990 and it sets the goals and the criteria for the next layer of planning, which is the multi county planning policies through Vision 2050. Those in turn provide the guidance and direction for the countywide planning policies. And it's the countywide planning policies that set the framework and establish sort of this consistency across different issues within King County that allow our comprehensive plans to be consistent with each other. Each city and King County must adopt a comprehensive plan. And the next scheduled update is June 30th of 2024. It sounds like a long way away, but a lot of jurisdictions, some are starting their planning now and most will begin in earnest early next year. And it's those comprehensive plans that actually provide the regulations that are evidenced through the zoning code, which we will then see evidence through the development and construction of the built environment. So the Growth Management Planning Council, I'm going to just quickly review that. Kenmore is very lucky to have one of their very own council members, Srebnik. It serves on the Growth Management Planning Council, so you are well represented. But the Growth Management Planning Council was established in 1992 via inter local agreement, right after the Growth Management Act. So the Growth Management Planning Council is not a requirement of the State Growth Management Act. Rather, it was established by inter local agreement as a way for the county to consult with the cities on some of these countywide issues for which the county has the authority. So it's convened by the county executive, has members representing King County Council, the city of Seattle and the Sound Cities Association. And again, you're represented on the GMPC through the Sound Cities Association. We also have ex officio members representing special purpose districts, school districts and the Port of Seattle. And the main function of the Growth Management Planning Council is to oversee the amendments and the update development of the countywide planning policy. So this includes the establishment of the urban growth area, growth targets, which we're going to talk about in greater detail here this evening. And then other topics of a countywide nature that cross jurisdictional lines, such as transportation and environmental issues. The GMPC is not a legislative body. It's representative bodies that cannot make laws. What it does is it makes recommendations to the county council. And what the county council does is once they approve it, push it back out to the cities for ratification. And once it's been ratified by 30% of the jurisdictions, representing 70% of the population within 90 days, it becomes law. So a little bit here, just again, to reiterate what the countywide planning policies do, very general nature. The illustrative map on the left shows you the urban growth boundary. In red, that zigs and zags, you can see Lake Washington and Kenmore at the very tip of that. And you do not touch the urban growth boundary, but you know, it still affects how the city develops in that by containing growth into the urban area and protecting our rural area farms and forests. So the countywide planning policies provide, again, this guidance for the comprehensive plans, criteria for amending the urban growth area, establish growth targets for each jurisdiction, set the definitions for urban centers and manufacturing industrial centers. And then again, addresses issues of a countywide nature. So what I'm going to do now is just go quickly through the policies of each of the chapters, the main substantive chapters in the CPPs. So in the environment chapter, well, first let me back up a second. So back in June of 2020, the Growth Management Planning Council set some guiding principles for the update. And first and foremost, they said, let's work off the 2012 CPP. So we're not going to just start from the very beginning, but rather work from the 2012 CPPs. Then they said that what we need to do is look at each of these policies through an equity lens in order to advance equity and social justice in the county. And when we're doing that, you know, establishing the growth targets and incorporating other legislative changes, again, to do that with an eye towards equity. And so each of the substantive chapters, when we go through really quickly, the themes of each of those chapters, you'll see equity and social justice running through each of these. We don't have a chapter that says equity, but within each of the chapters, we are looking at how what we do can improve opportunity and equity for all. So moving on to the environment chapter, we have a new section of the environment chapter that focuses on climate change and really kind of beefs up what the policies we had. We are proposing a new climate goal based on the changes that the Washington State Legislature adopted last year. Again, emphasis on addressing environmental justice and providing parks, trails, open space, green spaces within walking distance of all residents and especially looking at our underserved communities. And then, of course, a look to using best available science when establishing and implementing any new environmental standards. Next up is development patterns, and I'm going to turn it over to Rebecca, who's going to talk about the development patterns chapter and specifically growth targets and also the housing issues as well.
Thanks, Karen. So the development patterns in the housing chapters are really some of where the most changes to the countywide planning policies are taking place. The development patterns chapter covers everything from growth targets and setting the UGA to urban design and a lot of neighborhood characteristics that we want to plan for. So this is strongly affected by Vision 2050 and some of the other different changes that have happened since 2012 that Karen pointed out. Key to the development patterns chapter is that we are upgrading our centers designation framework to comport with a revised regional centers framework from PSRC. And the big change there is that we are expanding our regional centers framework to include countywide centers as well. So that is a significant addition to the policies in that realm. We will be also ensuring that plans make a connection between past segregating practices of housing and land use policy and current health disparities and differences in different aspects of things like homeownership by different races and ethnicities. So making sure, making sure that connection between past practices and current land use patterns is present within our planning. Additionally, we are updating our growth targets, which I'll talk a little bit more about, but also codifying how we work together across the cities and King County to update things like the growth targets, how we work together to update our urban growth capacity report and work together about annexation. And finally, we are developing a new set of growth targets to cover the 2019 to 2044 period to serve as the land use assumptions for jurisdictions as they update their comprehensive plan. So a little bit more about growth targets as a part of the CPPs. They are a policy statement about the number of housing units and the number of jobs that each jurisdiction is planning for in their comprehensive plan. We've spent a lot of time working collaboratively with county kind of facilitating and all the jurisdictions, all the cities participating in the process of setting these growth targets because we want to make sure that we're setting growth targets that cities actually want to plan for and reconcile some of the differences that we've experienced in the past between comprehensive plans and our growth targets. So targets cover about 20 years. Our targets will be about 25 years. We set them for the urban area only, so that includes urban unincorporated King County and the 39 cities within King County. We create the targets through what starts as a top down process where we create, have a regional forecast and apportion it to King County and then the regional geographies that are inherent in Vision 2050's regional growth strategy. Regional geography is a group of cities that share similar characteristics. And Kenmore is in this HCT community. You see, he stands for high capacity transit communities. With, I have a slide on the next that has the other cities and urban unincorporated areas in here. But high capacity transit communities are jurisdictions that are planning for significant transit investments or have recently expanded their transit networks to include high capacity transit like light rail or bus rapid transit, but that don't have regional growth centers, which is what core cities and metro cities have. So you can see that about 30,000 housing units and about almost 30,000 jobs have been allocated to the high capacity transit communities. And in our growth targets, this is kind of how it sorts out. So that Kenmore highlighted up in here as a part of the themes that were important to this group of jurisdictions as we're allocating growth targets. As you can imagine, the name high capacity transit communities, transit investments were a serious talking point. Excuse me, my throat's a little dry. Both target or transit that's coming soon or that's actually happening after the planning period. Excuse me, I take a drink of water. Pardon me. Cities were very passionate in their discussions here to focus on their shares of relative capacity. And also expressed some uncertainty about growth into the future, particularly on the job side. I think COVID has been a real uncertainty for a lot of folks here and we are sorting how to include that into our planning process right now, given that these are kind of long range planning goals. We're still monitoring to see the long term effects of COVID and how this is going to affect our transit and our growth patterns. But given that we're going out 25 years, we don't really know how long these trends are going to stick around. And so given also that it's an iterative process, we will work to kind of update when we get new information as necessary. So moving back to the countywide planning policies as a whole, talk a little bit about the housing chapter. So the housing chapter is also receiving a thorough scrub as we're doing this update. And that's in large part because of the work of the Regional Affordable Housing Task Force and the action plan that we are revising the countywide planning policies to be in line with. So this involves a significant change based on the redefinition of countywide need for affordable homes based on the cost burden or the share of income that each household is spending on its housing situation. Another key addition to our CPPs is that cities will be guided through this continuous improvement plan, which means they plan, plan for housing, implement tools to develop that housing, monitor the results and tweak the process as necessary. And on that monitoring point, we're committing to a longer term monitoring scheme in terms of a dashboard and some reporting by each jurisdiction in King County. So I'm going to turn it back to Karen now to take the rest of the chapters of the CPPs.
Great. Thanks so much for that, Rebecca. Again, building on our theme of increasing opportunity and improving equity throughout the county, the economy checkter picks that up in a big way. And so in addition to And so in addition to talking about advancing manufacturing throughout the county. Providing a variety of middle wage jobs, and that's what we used to call family wage jobs. And now using this terminology consistent throughout the county of middle wage jobs. But also turning our attention to those locally owned women and minority owned businesses. That actually sort of, you know, create an identity within each community and, you know, a cultural identity as well. And what can we do to help support, create a supportive environment for these businesses? And we're also looking at the in the same vein of of talking about, you know, reducing. Displacement of businesses, we talk about a lot about displacement of residences, but not businesses. And, you know, recognizing that they're really the heart of our community. And at the same time, looking at reducing historic and ongoing disparities in income and opportunities. And again, it's these smaller locally owned businesses that hire people within the community and help to create more opportunities. And so how can the public and private sectors kind of work together? On environmental stewardship and social responsibility as well. And again, that's our link back to the environment chapter. So while each chapter does have its own specific, you know, focus area, they are all linked together. Next up. Is transportation and Rebecca talked quite a bit about our house. High capacity transit communities of which Kenmore is one. And very much talking about here, creating an equitable transportation system. So one that can increase the safety for all users and especially those users who are captive transit users. So that includes teenagers and the elderly, people who have disabilities, people who choose not to drive. People who can't afford a car and so on. But how can our transportation system really address the needs of the entire population and create those opportunities? We want to look at minimizing displacement and impact on any affected communities with transit oriented development, for example. And really look at connection can strengthening our connections between transportation and land use. And finally, again, with a link towards the environment chapter and our reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. To look at promoting active transportation so we can reduce reliance on single occupant vehicles. Excuse me. And then last of our. Substantive chapters is public facilities and services. And again, we're looking at climate change in this chapter. How to make investments in renewable and alternative energy sources, reduce our reliance on fossil fuels. Importantly, here we're looking at expanding broadband internet to businesses and households of all income levels and throughout the county. Just both urban and rural areas. And importantly, we're looking at how to link what we do in land use arena with. Resiliency based on what we've learned from the King County Hazard Mitigation Plan. In which Kenmore is a partner in that plan as well. And so next up, want to just talk a little bit about key milestones. So in March, the Growth Management Planning Council. Released the public review draft of the policy matrix, which is out for comment. That's where we are now in April. That comment period closes in May. And then the the updated document will go to the Growth Management Planning Council on May 26. And then we'll be looking for approval from the Growth Management Planning Council based on their comments. In May, another revised version will come to them the end of June for approval. And if all goes according to plan, we'll then go to the county council for their adoption and then get pushed back out to the cities. For ratification in the fourth quarter. So just to summarize where we are in terms of the public comment period, it's ongoing through May 5. And then we have a link to the website and we'll make sure, you know, your staff has access to that as well. And can work with us on providing comments. The we're asking the comments be sent to their new GMPC email address. But we're always happy to talk with staff and take any comments directly and answer any questions that you may have. And with that, that concludes our presentation, but we're happy to stay and answer any questions you might have.
Muted Mr. Mayor.
Marsh, Councilmember Marshall, do you have a question?
Yes, I just wanted actually say, I think definitely to be commended on the focus on equity. When I was in law school and did an internship for the Central Puget Sound Growth Management Hearings Board. Never would I conceive that such a concept would be introduced into everything that seemed to be focused on development, development, development. So that's great. What, and a second question that or a second thought, how do you define advanced manufacturing?
Rebecca, you want to try that one? Neither Rebecca or I worked on that specific, the economy chapter. But I'll let Rebecca give it a go at first, she seems.
Thanks Karen. I I'm laughing because I I we had an internal meeting about this and that same question came up. So I looked up apparently advanced manufacturing is manufacturing that is enhanced by some significant technology. In terms of putting stuff together or automating the process. So there's some some robots or some programming going alongside typical human workers.
Any other questions? So I have one, this when it comes back to the cities for ratification at the end of the year. Is that another one that if we don't vote, we ratify it?
That's correct. So either you can take a positive action. Or do nothing and that counts for ratification and that'll all be clear in the letter you get from the clerk.
I just wanted to make sure I was remembering the process.
Absolutely, Mayor, that's right.
Anything else? Oh, Councilmember Shrubnik.
Yeah, I just want to thank King County staff for for great work on the GMPC. I mean, we're always briefed and have great information like this. So it's it's super helpful. And I know we submitted a a number of of comments and I know they're going to kind of get back to us on on the status of those. I I wasn't sure if we're also going to get briefed by our staff on this because I do have a question for our staff. If this is the right time for that.
I think this is the right time for that.
It was just just one question and it's about the growth targets, both in the jobs and the housing or, you know, roughly 3,000 ish. Over the 25 year period, and I was curious how that, which is, you know, 100 average of 120 years or so. Is, you know, how does that compare to kind of where we've been at over the last maybe four or five years on average? I'm just wondering whether those targets are more aggressive than we are on track to be doing or less or about right. Or I was just curious.
I I think my perspective is that they're they're sort of close to where we have been historically. Historically, we've had significantly more capacity for housing units. And we've been, I I think if we look at the urban growth capacity study, we've been tracking along. A little bit less than we needed to get to the goal. But we are on track. As far as jobs go. Jobs, we're still checking some of the data related to jobs. But we have always been close to our target for jobs. I mean, close to not having enough jobs capacity based on historic development. We have certainly the zoning in place that would allow plenty of jobs. And then if you were to look at our historic jobs growth, we actually have seen a job loss. And so we're not sure how serious that is, but we have been looking with PSRC to see more carefully. What that job loss means. At this point, it looks like there were sort of small job losses over a number of businesses. But we we have to catch up from our past target and then move forward with the new target. So I I think our targets are fine, but we have kind of a deficit of jobs at the moment. Got you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilmember Kugler.
My question is kind of piggybacking off of what Councilmember Shrubnik asked about. Because I'm looking at the charts, the job, the job loss is pretty significant compared to other cities. And, you know, we're one of, I think, only three cities that has gone down. From the chart that I was looking at, the exhibit that I was looking at. So a couple of questions related to that. One is, it sounds like, do we, do we have an idea as to what has contributed to that job loss? And can I also seek some clarification about how it's defined? Like, is the employer located in Kenmore? Does it also include an employer in Kenmore, but perhaps employs people in different locations?
I I think I can start and then I'm going to turn it over to Rebecca, she knows. So we have been very concerned about the PSRC jobs lost numbers. We are not aware of any significant change in jobs. And so we had gone back to the county who then got in touch with PSRC to say, what does this mean? And why is there this apparently more dramatic change that we don't see on the ground in the community? So I don't think we have a complete answer yet. But I will turn it over to Rebecca to see what her comments might be. And then also to answer the question about where employers are and where the employees are.
So yes, so as staff has indicated, we are still working with PSRC to kind of determine what that the source of this loss, apparent loss is. I'd say how we look at this is highly dependent on how the the range of years that we're looking at. So for this comparison, we're looking at 2018 versus 2006. Obviously, there was a large recession in the middle of that period. I think that the job losses that we're seeing, my educated guess is maybe related to the recession. If you look at your job growth in Kenmore from say 2012 through 2018, it's a net positive. So clearly the job that the city has added jobs during this time, it's a bit of an anomaly. And I think that we have the bandwidth to kind of make an allowance or explain some of that loss away. In in the various reporting tools that we have. On your question about where, how the jobs are counted, the source of this information is coming from the Employment Security Department of the state. It's basically every employer that has to pay into the unemployment insurance. So it generally includes folks or employers that are have more than one employee. And it's counted on its work site location. So for some places like Starbucks, PSRC goes in and does some significant work to kind of make sure they break out the jobs to different locations. So we that does happen and it should be reliable for its workplace locations.
Deputy Mayor.
What happens if we don't hit these numbers? I understand that we need to plan for, you know, the housing, we need to plan for the employment. But what happens if those, you know, we can't force these things to happen either, we can lay the groundwork. What happens if if we don't hit those numbers?
So if we don't, this is a planning exercise and we are aiming towards our targets. And we are making sure that we have the land use. Tools in place and the zoning in place to be able to meet those targets. Obviously, the market is going to have play a huge role in determining whether we meet our targets. And and I know, and Karen may want to speak to this, but I know the county has a process. If if you really are behind on your targets, they might inquire like, why are you not meeting your targets? But but truly, there's there's not. Nothing bad is going to happen as long as we are in a position to have in place plans and zoning. That would allow the development to come here if the market brought it here.
Thank you.
That's absolutely correct. And so what we'll be looking at and Puget Sound Regional Council will be looking at when they certify the plans. Is that your land use assumptions are consistent with the target numbers. So. We all, you know, that's what we can do, right? Is just make sure that we're planning for that growth and and that each jurisdiction, you know, is is stepping up to do their share. And then. You know, over time, it's worked pretty well, but you know, it's it that's you can't get, there's no guarantees.
So any other questions? Piggybacking on what Councilmember Shrubnik was alluding to earlier indicating. I have served on a number of different committees, commissions, and I'm always impressed with the staff. The county staff and what a great job they do and how prepared they are. And. How they help someone as slow as me sometimes. See the see what I'm supposed to be seeing. So thank you guys very much. We really appreciate your taking time out of your evening here tonight to come talk to us. So thank you. All right. Next item on our agenda. Is the annual police report 2020 presented by Police Chief Brandon Moen. For information and discussion, chief, there you are.
I'm here. I was I was here the whole time. I was just hiding behind my black screen there. Thank you all for. Have me here tonight. Let me share my screen. See that? Okay.
Yes.
Great. So thank you. This is my second time I've been before you for a police services report. I hope at some point to be able to do it in person, maybe next year.
So do I.
Yes. So just a quick summary rundown of what the agency currently consists of. It's myself, 11 patrol officers and our dedicated detective. We continue to carry one vacancy as what's called the fair share vacancy that all the. Contract cities and areas served by the sheriff's office. Due to staffing shortages throughout the sheriff's office and in law enforcement, we break up those vacancies throughout and share the share the burden. And in our case, it's one vacancy that we continue to carry. We also have major crimes, special assault units, the arson investigators, smart detectives. They all continue to be provided by the sheriff's office as needed. We obviously 24/7 coverage, we continue to have two officers on at all times at a minimum. We're 10 hour shifts with the overlap during our busiest times, which tend to be early evening into the. Need early night, continue to operate with a shared supervision with Shoreline. So myself, I'm the only. Administrator or supervisor for Kenmore. So in my absence of the outside of the 40 hours that I'm at work during the day, Shoreline continues to provide our patrol supervision. Through our contract with Shoreline. So just to give you an idea of where we are staffing, continue to operate at about six tenths of an officer per 100,000, sorry, per 1,000 residents. That makes us about the second low, actually, it does make us the second lowest. Staff within King County based on that that comparison. The average for police departments, not sheriff's offices, but police departments throughout the state is about 1.45 per thousand residents. Like I said, we're about six tenths. These numbers actually do take into account the kind of the fractional FTEs that we have. These numbers actually do take into account the fractional FTEs that we have through those specialty units. So we pay for a small percentage of an FTE for, say, major crimes, another one for arson detectives, arson investigators, those numbers, these numbers that you're saying actually take that into account. As you know, we were recently awarded, or at least ranked as the ninth safest city in the state of Washington. SafeWise is an organization that does this ranking based on a number of criteria they have for certain cities of a certain size. And it was a nice honor that they were able to give us, we're the ninth safest in the state. Despite the COVID issues that we've had, we've really tried to increase our community outreach and community engagement. In 2020, we created Facebook, Twitter, and Nextdoor accounts, which we did not have before specifically for the police department. Try to be creative in the manner in which we use them to not only identify suspects that may be out in the public and can engage the public in looking for individuals that they're committing crime, but also notifying the public on crime trends and crime prevention tips that will hopefully prevent them from being a victim of crime. We have been able to do some of the school outreach through Zoom book readings and things that unfortunately we're not able to do in person anymore. But we've kind of, kind of tried to be creative in the manner in which we're doing it. The bottom line is, I, my goal in doing the social media outreach and all of this community engagement is really to make people aware of what's going on in the community. I believe they have the right and they, and I have the responsibility to make them aware of what is happening and make them well informed. It's been a wishful thinking here, but I'm still hoping to have a national event in August. August 3rd is kind of the national date when it's planned. If, big if, it does happen, it would be 100% outdoors with prepackaged ice cream and as little contact with items as possible. And still trying to pull off a bike rodeo at some point. If we do do a national, I do want to do that to get kids out actually in the parking lot, working through obstacles and learning about bike laws and how to bike safely. So we're hopeful for August 3rd. It's written in pencil, though not in pen. We've taken out a couple of, several projects here recently that started there. The ball got rolling in 2020, but we actually just started, as you know, the Safe Place project in 2021 as we try to create a program where people are encouraged to report hate crimes that traditionally have either gone unreported or at least underreported and providing businesses and locations where people feel safe to go and wait for the police call 911 and be able to report the crime. Target Zero, we continue to partner with the city on Target Zero goals. We continue to do traffic emphasis projects primarily through the Washington State Traffic Safety Commission and grants that we get through them. In fact, last week, we did distracted driving emphasis primarily on Botha Way and wrote a number of tickets for people that, I believe, almost all of them were on cell phones. So doing emphasis projects like that. We also protect in the engineering department's high visibility vest distribution project. Our officers have, each of them has vests in their trunk that if they see someone out that would benefit, either on a bicycle or on foot, benefit from having a vest because they're not revisible. Officers have them handy to hand out to the public. We do partner with the city's traffic engineer a great deal. We communicate a lot on a number of projects that are going on. And when traffic safety issues come up, either through collisions or things that I'm aware of, totally, I talk quite a bit. And we already discussed the bike rodeo that is hopefully coming up. Radar, I'll just touch on very briefly because tonight after my presentation, we're fortunate enough to have Brooke Butner, who was our program manager, who's going to go into a little more detail on the current status of the project and where it's going next and a number of things. So I'll just, very briefly on radar, and that we continue to partner with our neighboring agencies on this program and doing as much navigator outreach as we've been able to. It was a bit of a problem in 2020 as we were avoiding, you know, just when the pandemic first started, avoiding person-to-person contact as much as possible. So it didn't make sense for us to go out with two people and start knocking on people's doors and contacting them in the midst of the pandemic. So the numbers for outreach weren't as high as we'd like, but we will be doing more in 2021. Radar continues to be funded by MID and WASPIC grants. In addition, in this last budget, council was able to provide digital funds, additional investment really in the community to allow us to do dedicated outreach. Really makes it more efficient to do the outreach on dedicated time. In 2020, we also engaged in the mayor's pledge to the Obama Foundation where we took on a number of tasks that we, starting the year, did not anticipate doing. But the council hosted a number of listening sessions and a special council meeting, which ultimately culminated in a report published in fall of 2020. In that report, there are a number of recommendations, both locally at the county level and state level. Locally, we continued to look at some targeted training, which, like everything else, challenging with the pandemic and the training that's not normally available, or I'm sorry, is normally available, but right now it's challenged to get into. So that's a work in progress. We are very proactive right now in implementing the community representatives for the independent investigation teams. Quite honestly, we're well ahead of the curve over most agencies in the region, if not the state, in getting those community representatives up and going and the independent investigation teams ready so that those community representatives can be part of it. We did a process in, I believe it was late 2020, to interview or to advertise and then interview. I believe we had 20 applicants for those positions. Eleven are currently going through some backgrounding and fingerprinting investigation, or background investigations. So they'll be, because they'll be privy to a number of confidential personal information, so they have to be backgrounded. So we're going through that process. Over the last few weeks, we've actually sent all of them through some initial orientation training that we've done in conjunction with Shoreline and Lake Forest Park Police. Obviously, continues, or talked about, community oriented policing efforts, always ongoing. The annual use of force reporting is something is later on in this presentation that I committed to doing. It's talking about what used to the force actually occurred in our past calendar year. And I just mentioned the additional funding that the council allotted to Radar to do additional outreach or at least targeted outreach. At the county and state level, there's a number of, number of things that the city continues to lobby and advocate for, which are still ongoing. So I was asked to do kind of a comparison of our our data versus our neighbors, our next door neighbors. Unfortunately, this data has to be from 2019. This, while we're all using neighbors now, and I won't go into the difference between neighbors and our old system, but we're all reporting our crime using the same kind of ground rules and neighbors. But they're all compiled by WASPIC, the Washington Association of Sheriff's and Police Chiefs. And they do an annual report that comes out in the middle of summer. So not available to me when I'm doing this presentation early spring. So right now, these numbers are based in 2019 in the report that they generated. Essentially, what it shows relative to our neighbors, we are doing quite well in relation to those group A offenses, which are really the crimes that matter. There's everything from murder to your run-of-the-mill shoplift theft. It's the all encompassing, almost all encompassing crimes that we're concerned about. So as you can see there, the numbers are lower than our neighbors, and we're doing, doing well. If we look a little bit wider out at the county, those same numbers were seventh, I believe, in King County. And that's including some pretty small cities, Bowartz Village and Skycamish are pretty, pretty small towns. And if you look at the Limited Carnation, Yarra Point as well, also fairly small, we're third with Bynes and Navish and DeBol. That crime rate statistic reported by WASPIC. Also note of the top 12 there on the screen, 10 of the 12 are actually jurisdictions that contract with the Sheriff's Office. So throughout 2020, we had a number of notable investigations that happened. What you see on the screen there, just some Facebook summaries that I provided to the public. But there was a couple of residential burglaries previously that we had. One in particular was one hour of crime, where this gentleman just committed a number of, number of crimes. And after a lengthy investigation through our detective, who did an awesome job, was able to ultimately solve every single one of those crimes by arresting the subject. We also had a series of commercial burglaries that most of them were committed by one particular individual who came in to the community, doesn't live here, and committed a number of burglaries along 175th, as well as regarding our construction site at the bridge over 68th. Ultimately, he was discovered by an officer who, after he tried to return again to regular as the site another time and was arrested, went up serving a search warrant and on his vehicle and recovering a great deal of property, including property from a number of burglaries in the region that he had been committing. Again, these investigations can be very convoluted, so I'm very proud of the work that our detective and the patrol officers have done and addressing them. The major crimes unit, we had a few fairly high-profile incidents. One at the beginning of the year, one at the end of the year, the beginning of the year being establishing a store clerk on 181st that resulted in an arrest. And the end of the, very end of the year, it's a burglary suspect also on 181st that tried to enter a business and end up, the resident ended up shooting her after she pulled out a gun as well. So those are kind of the two major crimes, large major crimes callouts, in which they did a number of investigations. So kind of getting into the police services report itself, over some highlights of the year, as we talked about, staffing has remained generally the same the past several years. Response times in 2020 went down. I would attribute that primarily to there being less traffic. This traffic allows us to get calls quicker. There also were less calls for service, which you'll see in the next slide, which also means we're tied up on less calls, which allowing us to get to the calls a little bit sooner. The calls for service are what we call dispatched calls for service. It's down slightly, down about 14%. Again, I attribute this to pandemic, less collisions, less less things going on at businesses, less people out and about. It's primarily what I attribute it to. We also were encouraging people to report online as much as possible. I don't have the online reporting numbers, but I can tell you as someone who reads each one of, not only the reports generated by our officers, but also the reports generated online from the public, they were using that system very well and certainly learned how to use it if they hadn't before. In terms of how the calls are spread throughout the city, you can see that we have four quadrants, what we call the under one, under two, under four, and under five, and then we're three being kind of the center, most of Botha Way. The northeast corner of the city was the busiest in 2020. But that does include the north side of Botha Way, east of 73rd, which has a number of businesses. And I think that's one of the bigger reasons that that particular district saw as much activity. It's fairly balanced throughout the course of the year, 800 to 900 calls per quarter. I will say that I just recently got the first quarter report for 2021, and the calls for service through those districts were far more balanced this first quarter than they were in 2020. So self-initiated police activity, we commonly refer to as on views. These are traffic stops, area checks, number suspicious stops, things of that sort. Down just a little bit, which, again, given the pandemic, we were not trying to go out and initiate as much on the activity as much, as much as we normally would do the pandemic. But we, at a minimum, were asking officers to be highly visible. That's what I asked them. At a bare minimum, we want to be visible and know the community that we're out there. So NiGERS classifies primarily into two, classifies crimes primarily into two groups, crimes against persons, crimes against property. The crimes against persons, of course, being the more serious of the two, they were actually down about 15% in 2020. Whereas crimes against property went up a great deal. Now, the caveat to that, you see it in the police services report and in the slide, is that that is primarily due to unemployment fraud. Unemployment fraud was rampant throughout the state for the, all the pandemic, really. It died down in the summer, but there was a point there after some local news stories were out about it that we were getting dozens and dozens and dozens per day in the queue. People were, so people were more aware of it, and they were not shy about reporting it to us. Fortunately, that then does result in a higher stat for crimes against property. But that's going to be seen throughout the state and all our jurisdictions. I also should note, though, there was also an increase in vandalism, notable increase in vandalism, which were primarily graffiti and prowler-related, vehicle-related vandalism. So those were also up. See aggravated assaults and simple assaults, both were down overall about 14% total, which obviously is a nice statistic to have. If you look at total commercial burglaries and residential, this graph shows you the combination of the two. Burglaries were up slightly, primarily, at least partially, due to the burglaries I just spoke about, in which we were fortunate enough to make some arrests. But I will say, when I look at the residential burglaries, because residential burglary is something near and dear to my heart, having been affected by them personally, it's a very personal thing when someone's house is violated by someone kicking in the door and committing a residential burglary. So I watched it very closely. We actually had very few of those in 2020. People were home most of the year, and so it was difficult to commit residential burglaries. That said, the stats don't necessarily show that because we did have a fair amount of, where burglaries not necessarily associated with the home. 75% of our residential burglaries last year involve some type of either the garage or attached shed of some type, which classifies the burglary. In fact, 40% of those residential burglaries, or 40% of the overall burglaries, were not even in the residential floor. So what we had a number of were burglaries that occurred in parking garages of apartment complexes. Because the apartment complex is completely enclosed or secure from the public, and someone forces their way in or is able to somehow gain entry and does not live there, steals a bicycle, which seemed to be a common target, cuts a chain, steals a bicycle, they technically have committed a burglary because they broke into a confined area, fenced area within a building. So again, that tweaks the stats a little bit. So we see residential burglaries sometimes spike. This is necessarily residential burglaries that we think of traditionally, which luckily were relatively low in 2020. Motor vehicle thefts, fairly steady, there's a slight uptick, not as concerned. UIs were down slightly, about 22%, despite, despite the bars being closed for a large portion of 2020. The portion of impaired drivers are always going to be out there. So the next few slides are actually specific to traffic collisions. I know that's a number of city goals and priorities result from traffic safety. So when we look at these, we look at these a little bit closer. Traffic collisions are down about 38% in 2020. I attribute this obviously to lower traffic volumes related to pandemic, less cars in the road. There's less odds of there being a conflict between vehicles, can result in less collisions. That is a sizable decline, and it'd be nice if we can keep that and not necessarily counting on it. We look a little bit closer to collisions. The map shows the dots are vehicle collisions only. Obviously, the bigger the dot, the more collisions that occur to that location. As you can see, as you expect, they tend to be focused along the higher volume corridors, the major intersections. Along Bothell Way, along 68th, Juanita, et cetera, with some outliers. When we look specifically at the bicycle collisions, there were five bicycle collisions in 2020, resulting in fairly minor injuries. The one that had would be bordering on a little more serious injuries was per se is an equipment violation, or no, it's a equipment violation, equipment failure on the bicycle. No, no vehicle collided with the rider. It was a result of equipment failure. And we had two pedestrian involved collisions in 2020, both on 73rd, one at 192nd and 73rd and one at 73rd and Bothell Way. We look at the historic trends of bicycle pedestrian collisions over the years, we're right now at see here, and green being the pedestrian, I hit the button. Green being that pedestrian collisions were down to what has been the lowest number since 2017, which we had two as well, bicycle collisions were also at a near low. Going up to five. So all of these bicycle pedestrian collisions, I can say they were all involved adults, they were all adults, adult bicyclists, adult pedestrians. And the bicycle collisions in particular, three to five were collisions that resulted from the vehicle just failing to yield. And one of them from a vehicle fail, passing the bicyclist unsafe. And again, the last one being a mechanical issue. For those five bicycle collisions, you saw on that map earlier, we're on that Juanita corridor between, it's between 68th and Bothell Way, all the way up the hill to 153rd and Juanita. And that, as you know, is a corridor in which the city is investing a great deal of resources to improve not only bicycle pedestrian safety. So it's certainly nice to see that we are addressing that. In both of the pedestrian collisions that occurred in 2020, both were in crosswalks. Both are well-marked crosswalks. They were simple driver inattention. Luckily, due to the manner in which that's the manner in which the collisions occurred, they were very low speed and likely very minor injuries involved. As I mentioned earlier, I committed to providing use of force information as occurs each year. In 2020, we had three use of force incidents and involving Kenmore officers. And I went into, because there's only three, it's easy to go into a little more detail. First one being June is a DB suspect that was destroying the, it was his mother's house and was early out of control, officers arrive. He's storming at the mother while they're there and stepped in front. This confrontation and ultimately took him down and then the result of him going to the ground, he got a scrape. As we discussed last year in the Obama, Obama Foundation mayor's pledge process, any amount of injury is the use of force. So it doesn't matter whether someone's got a scratch or a scrape, it's a use of force if we're involved. So that was one. The other two involve pointing to firearms. Anytime we point a firearm at someone, it is a use of force. So one was, as you can see, murder suspect that actually occurred in Bothell and Kenmore, but involved a Kenmore officer. So that was one of the statistics. And the other one is the end of the year involving a subject that was said to be armed with a handgun and knife. And again, the officer pointed his firearm out. So those were the three incidents of force within Kenmore in 2020. Were no complaints or allegations resulted from them. All of them were investigated as we do with every use of force. Starts at my level or at the sergeant level, depending if I'm working in our patrolling sergeant comes and does the initial investigation. Goes through the chain of command through our precinct, ultimately ends up downtown in the term investigations unit, is reviewed at several levels there. And in this case, they were all investigated and found within policy. Also committed to providing some demographic information of those involved, all three of those subjects that we just discussed, which force we used were male, two were white, one was black. As you can see, the statistics and we dealt with, where we had about 9,500 dispatch calls for service or on view activities over the course of 2020 and reuse the force, use of the force during that time. I continue to be very proud of our, our officers. As we use force minimally, we are trained well to use de-escalation and we do whatever way to avoid using force. I've seen it in my time in this department, I see it when I go out and officers on these calls as much as I can. This is a everyday way of life and how we operate, and I think that it's a testament to the officers that we have working here and the culture that we've created here, here at our agency. That's the last slide, it's just my last bit of advertisement, trying to get people to follow us on Facebook, Twitter, Nextdoor. I'll just follow, I'll just end by saying, this was a very challenging year, quite honestly, for 2020 being a very challenging year for myself and for all in law enforcement and Kenmore police, we're not immune to that. Our, despite that, I'm very proud of our team, our ability to adapt. And really the professionalism that we showed and the face of some, some challenges that we did not see coming. And it was a tremendous, tremendous testament to the hard work and the dedication that officers have to Kenmore and to the public safety that we're able to provide. And I'm quite honestly very proud of, proud of the work that they do, day in and day out, night in, night out. So with that, I will stand by for any questions you may have.
Questions? Yes, Stephanie Mayor.
First off, Chief, I want to thank you for the report. This is probably the best one I've seen in my time here. So very thorough, really well done. I appreciate it. One question I have though is there's the uptick in what you, in vandalism. And I was wondering if catalytic converter theft would fall under that subcategory and explain, and if so, does that explain part of the uptick? Or is that a, is that something we're seeing in a measurably increase lately?
So that would not fall under vandalism, that would fall under theft from auto or just as a general larceny. Yeah. So unfortunately, I cannot attribute the vandalism uptick to that. There has been a fair amount of catalytic converter thefts in Kenmore. I will say, much like the unemployment fraud, it's not inconsistent with what we've seen in the region. I've actually seen some of our neighbors get hit worse than we have. It clearly, it's, it's the same group of people. They're targeting the same type of vehicles and they'll hit on a certain roadway and they come through in the middle of the night. And I see one report pop up in the queue and I come in the morning and I know I'm going to see a few more because as the day goes on and they'll put the spot, the vehicle, oftentimes it's a Prius that's very easy to get the converter out. And it's a ring of people in the region that are doing this. And I know there's some investigations going on at a larger scale where they're doing an excellent job at finding out where they're going. Without, I won't go into a lot of detail because it's ongoing, but there's work being done.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember filed, did I see your hand go up?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Baker. I do have a list of questions, Chief. And thank you for the amazing presentation and very thorough. I really appreciate that. Given the, the number of bills that were passed in Olympia and the recent Blake decision, I'm also, I'm very concerned about the inability to act upon drug use possession charges. And I'm concerned that we might need to adopt a legislation in Kenmore to, to adapt to this change. There is a correlation between a little bit of incentive when individuals are caught with use to try to seek recovery, support and whatnot. So that's my first question. Would you advise really any adoption of legislation or having concerns that we might need to do so?
So that's an issue that's been discussed a great deal here regionally. There are a few cities that have, after the Blake decision enacted their own drug specific ordinances, re, really re-criminalizing narcotics. With that Blake decision, it really tied our hands in terms of holding people accountable for the drug possession. So some cities were doing that on their own. What I'd recommend it at the time, and I continue to recommend is kind of wait and see mode to see what the legislature does in Olympia. The latest I'm hearing is that the Senate has passed a law that would make those, the drug possession rather than me a felony, be a misdemeanor, which where it really just shifts responsibilities from county courts to municipal courts. So will have an impact on cities that may end up having to prosecute these drug offenses that would normally be prosecuted downtown. So there's some implications to that, and I know that's being discussed at length in Olympia, but what I'm hearing is I think that they're going to go that route and rather than decriminalizing or leaving it decriminalized, possibly going to a misdemeanor route. In the meantime, the options that we have at our disposable this time are paraphernalia charges, which it's misdemeanor, it's something that allows us to potentially make an arrest if we absolutely need to. Or if we're charged to a prosecutor rather than for the drug possession, it's for the paraphernalia side of things. We haven't had it yet, that is an option and some agencies are discussing that as a possibility. But in reality, we're just waiting to see what comes out of Olympia and we should know, have a final answer here shortly.
Okay. And you know, I'm concerned about access to firearms within homes. And I noticed that the city of Edmonds passed an ordinance of 4120 relating to the storage of firearms with locking devices and lock boxes. And I'm wondering, do we in Kenmore have any such an ordinance or?
We do not. In fact, Edmund's ordinance, just recently, very recently, got struck down by the state appeals court. There's some legal minutia about who has authority to regulate gun laws and it seems to be a fairly complicated issue. And Edmund's kind of stuck their neck out there and tried doing it. And so they've been in a prolonged legal battle over that ordinance. So right now, it's not, not enforceable. So I certainly wouldn't recommend us going that route at this point. Kind of in a, I'd say we were kind of in a wait and see mode and see what happens with Edmund's. And if they continue with their legal battle to try to enact it or not.
And what would it take to hold a firearm take back program event?
That's actually something when I first started here in November, December 2018, we considered doing, I'd done some research on it at the time. What I found was at least locally, there was limited effectiveness. Seattle had done one, as far as I could find, the last time they've done it was where that in 2013 and they haven't done it since, at least that I can find. They had hosted one, while they got a fair number of firearms off the street, a lot of people were using it as an opportunity to turn in non-functioning, just junk firearms that technically were at one point probably worked, but they're using as an opportunity to get a free gift card. And also, we also found that when they're trying to do this buyback program, there would be gun dealers out before, in the queue before people would get to the buyback, offering cash legally for guns that they were trying to attempt to buy back. So there's some, some hiccups that they were having. Again, did they get guns off the street? Yes. Was it as effective as I think they'd hoped? Probably not. There's some research they found on the effectiveness of the programs and it was, it was kind of hit and miss, quite honestly, but something I'll continue to look at closer.
And you have two more questions. We have a very successful drug disposal program, which is great here in Kenmore. What we have not yet done is connect to the free for, the free pharmacy home lockbox program. That's usually routed from the sheriff's office to any participating municipality. There's a lot of evidence that shows when you have a home pharmacy lockbox and you connect these programs into communities that you can reduce access to youth and abuse of prescriptions and narcotic prescriptions. What would it take to adapt to one of these programs?
So it just so happens that last week I was talking to a group of, well, a classroom of fourth graders, Kenmore Elementary, about this very topic. Prescription drugs and how share drugs and if you see pills in the house, not candy, you know, all the typical things you discussed before it's greater on this topic. And so it's an issue that I, I was just recently dealing with. But I'm not familiar with that lockbox program in terms of it being free. So that's something I'm going to have to look into and see if that's something that's we can implement here and if it's something we can get the boxes for free. Should require a great deal of effort. But I would certainly look into it closely.
Okay. And then really the last thing I, I was going to touch upon, I think for tonight, is I noticed that you do have a little lacking supportive staff. Or you have great support in your staff, but you are lacking some staff. And you do a bunch of your administrative work yourself. I'm a little concerned about the best use of taxpayer dollars and you performing, you know, both secretarial work and your own job as a chief, running your own team. And so I'm concerned that you may need a administrative staff personnel. And if not, even an intern to your team. Can you provide a little bit more input on that for us?
Sure. I will say that the administrative duties that I do, I wouldn't necessarily categorize them as secretarial. I would say they are the police related, their duties that traditionally would be performed by a police officer, commission police officer. Instead of reviewing reports and scheduling and things of that sort. I would say for a city this size, at least within their contracts and system of the sheriff's office, it's more common to have either a captain, having a captain as the chief and then having a administrative sergeant below. Or would also has happened in some other jurisdictions in the sheriff's offices, there would be a sergeant acting as the chief as I have now, as I am doing now. And having administrative sergeant as well. That, that would probably be the ideal scenario, if you get spread thin, but I do the best I can. I work hard with the hours that I have. I'm an hourly employee. I'm not salaried. I'm a sergeant in the sheriff's office and so I, I do as much as I possibly can in the hours and allotted. So sure, would I like, like more help? Absolutely. I'll take anything you're willing to give me. I'm not going to say no. In terms of interns, that it's been my experience with interns, they oftentimes require as much or more supervision as FTEs and it would probably generate more work for me than if I didn't have the intern, quite honestly. It's just another program for me to manage and, and personally supervise kind of within the span of control I already have with the entire department. I really appreciate the question.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Kugler.
Chief Moen, first, I want to thank you for your leadership of our police force. And just the short amount of time that I've been on the council, I've been really impressed by how many emails and kudos that we receive as council members for the work that you and your team do. And it's clear that there are many examples of them going above and beyond the call of duty to serve our residents. So thank you for that. I think all the council members and, and you who have been on this meeting all day are starting to see that I just come with a lot of questions. So I'm going to apologize in advance for that. I know some residents have voiced concern about like late night car racing in our city. And I wonder if you could speak about that issue, if there's anything that's being done or mitigating it or in particular. in particular, they've brought up concerns about noise and also it being a safety issue.
Yeah, I've gotten, I think I get the same emails that you all get as well. Here over probably the last few weeks to month, I've received emails typically regarding the area one eighty first and sixty eight, Long sixty eighth in that area in relation to loud mufflers and maybe even drag racing, things of that sort. I wouldn't say I've received a deluge of emails regarding on the topic, just a few. It's not to say it isn't a problem, but I don't know that I would say I received far more complaints about other issues than that particular one, at least recently. That said, doesn't mean it's not occurring, just not getting reported. So I encourage the people or encourage residents to call when it's occurring. It's difficult to catch repeat offenders that are maybe drag racing or speeding repeatedly without knowing when it's occurring. If they're going back and forth, calling nine one one or calling the non-emergency line, let us know, hey, it's happening right now. And then even a vehicle description, something that allows officers to go there and, and observe it. And hopefully they don't see us coming. So we can catch them if they don't see us coming. So yeah, I really just encourage people to report it and let us know when it's happening.
I think, I think there is a challenge in that it's happening really late at night, but you know, we can encourage people to do that when they hear it. I am so thankful that you've implemented the safe places program and am wondering if there are very many businesses that have stepped up to volunteer thus far.
So we're slowly getting the ball rolling. I wouldn't say a ton yet. Quite honestly, I have been tied up and have not been able to proactively encourage people to do it like I intended or wanted to do. But I've reached out to the school district about them during the program. My intent is to contact at a minimum, the large businesses, the most visible businesses, so we can get the decals in those doors, doors and windows. Sometimes it's dealing with the corporations versus the managers at the local level can be an issue. So we're certainly working on it. It's, it's a, it's a process and I hope to have a lot more involvement, engagement here in the near future.
Great. Um. I am wondering, like I noticed from your staffing levels that you presented in your PowerPoint that, you know, we have a low officer to resident ratio compared to other cities. And I'm wondering if there are crime prevention techniques that you think that we as a city or residents might be able to look into implementing to reduce like calls or having to dispatch police.
So I think I mentioned earlier with the, with the rings that we were having, whether we have residential burglary or commercial burglary ring or the catalytic converter thefts, the, what I always preach to people is don't allow yourself to be a victim and be vigilant so that, and honestly, those criminals will go somewhere else and commit their crime. Rather than me and Kenmore, they're going elsewhere in community crime. I'd rather have that and have our residents be on their toes and and doing the basic common sense things that will prevent them from being a victim. And it's, it's common sense of the same locking your doors, which people still don't do. Not leaving valuables and things with your cars, you know, at night. Again, people still do it. They'll leave purses and everything sitting right in the, in view, real common sense proactive things that people can do like that. And like I said before, the social media, I could try to mitigate that as best I can. So people know that those crime trends are happening in their neighborhood, that hey, this area is getting hit with catalytic converter thefts. So if you hear a saw at three in the morning, please call us. Don't assume it's just a noise complaint. Call us. Worst case, we're gonna drive by and nobody will be there. We, I tell people, we want to be bugged. Call us so we at least know. And we can be visible. Doesn't mean we're gonna catch anyone. Doesn't mean it's gonna solve a problem, but it at least makes us aware of the issue and, and often, oftentimes will result in an arrest or at least being visible in the area where it's happening. So yeah, I guess to answer your question, to me, it's being vigilant, common sense, everyday things that people just need to remember to do to get in the routine of lock your doors. Valuables out, know your neighbors, security cameras, things of that sort. So again, this is through social media, I'm hoping to push that method out more.
Yeah. Sorry, I have just a couple more. And I do want to say that I think the social media efforts have been really great. I do think they've been really, they've achieved exactly what you set out to, I think, which is to give people more insight and transparency into what's happening. You know, as you know, probably many organizations have been looking internally at ways that they can recognize and change how they contribute to systemic racism. I wonder if King County Sheriff's Office is working on any efforts? And if so, if you can share anything about that with community members?
Sure. So I'll speak generally about sheriff's office currently. We're in a very unique time in our agency's history and that we're transitioning to new leadership in the near future. And we're kind of in limbo a bit. And so those, like a lot of efforts within the command staff and policymakers downtown are geared more towards that transition. So I can't speak a whole lot to what's occurring immediately and in those respects of the I and things of that sort. I can say, you know, we, we certainly do have policies in place and have for a number of years of the issues that are traditionally associated with policing and the issues you mentioned with systemic racism of not profiling, not targeted harassment of groups, things of that sort. The common sense police policy is that, I mean, to us is common sense. Not all agencies have them. We do. We have for a number of years. And so it's something we've incorporated into our culture. I know also what the sheriff's office has done over the last several years is tried to increase our diversity in officers and deputies that we're hiring and opening the doors to individuals that maybe hadn't thought about entering law enforcement in the past. Kind of looking through the equity lens, they've, I know they've looked at, or they actually have implemented changes to the testing process, in particular, the physical testing that would, again, open the doors to individuals that and community members that oftentimes would not have qualified or maybe were on the verge of qualifying or were hesitant to do it because of the test. Well, removing some of those barriers such as that will allow them to slowly start making, creating a more diverse diverse department. So there's just a couple of things. I don't know if I answered your question, but it's tough with the sheriff's office. Like I said, it's a lot of things are going on here.
Yeah, great. And then my last question is, I just read a news article this morning about a mass exodus of police leaving Seattle PD. And, you know, there's a, I think, a national police shortage. And so my last question is actually about mutual aid, sort of how it works, whether we provide, you know, whether we ever, I guess, whether our force ever helps out with King County Sheriff's Office or Seattle PD or other police departments. And if so, how that impacts our, our team?
Sure. Great question. So we generally, if we're going to use mutual aid or assist our partners, they're going to be our neighboring agencies. I can't think of the time where Kenmore went as far as Seattle. I mean, we're helping our neighbors. It's Shoreline, Lake Forest Park, Boffel, Kirkland. And maybe Snowbird County if we need to go north through the border, but typically the mutual aid that we're providing to those outside agency agencies, non-sheriff's office agencies, the natural and not wooden build, Lake Forest Park, Boffel, Kirkland. Those are gonna be, those typically are for the larger events, something where there's a, a large incident that requires a perimeter or a canine tracker, something, something unique. Those are typically when we're providing that mutual aid. We're not providing it for the routine calls. Same goes with Shoreline. So we have a unique partnership with Shoreline. We work very closely with each other. We back each other on calls when needed. For instance, we have a two officer minimum. So we have one officer who's out of district because they're on their way to the jail or they're handling a different call. And a call comes out that requires two officers, a Shoreline officer will come over and go with the back or Kenmore officer on that call. So it allows us to not just have that call holding because at one officer oftentimes the domestic violence call, they're not supposed to, not allowed to go to that call by themselves. So Shoreline officer will come over and back us. So that wouldn't necessarily point that as mutual aid because Shoreline and Kenmore are the same precinct, we're the same officers, we're oftentimes the same supervisor, the Shoreline supervisor supervising both. It's a really unique partnership we have in Shoreline that works really well. And I think is mutually beneficial, kind of not only financially, but just logistically and how things work throughout the course of the day with the uncertainty of police work. We don't know when we're going to be ultra busy. So having that backup there is readily available on the same radio is extremely helpful.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember File, you already had one. I want to make sure we've got everybody else first. Chief, I've got a couple here. What happened to the bait car that we had?
That's a great question. I have no idea. That was used, I remember being an officer here, however long ago that was, ten, eleven, twelve years ago. And I remember us having it then. I recall that it became very clear in the community that people knew there was a bait car. And so kind of purpose, because everybody knew, oh, that's that's the car the police would kind of see it as steel. So it got burnt and then eventually we stopped using it. And over the past 10 years, I couldn't tell you where it went. I'll say generally, just my knowledge of law enforcement in the region, I'm not aware of agencies that uses them anymore.
Just curiosity with some of this vandalism going on, if, if it might be time to revive it. The other thing is there was an uptick, I guess, in nineteen and that in, in the service areas four and five. Now that we've had the constructions going on for over six months now and some restricted flow, what are our response times over to those areas now?
So you're referring to what we call the Edward Ford, Edward five, basically north of the So I haven't looked at the specific response times to those particular districts. I will say that just in my experience in talking to the officers, because I prior to the bridge construction and the one eater project, we had discussions about being prepared for this and how navigate the construction sites. I will say, based on what I'm hearing and what I've seen myself and having myself have tried to drive code lights and sirens through those sites, it has not been nearly the problem that I anticipated. Probably a great deal due to the pandemic and the reduced traffic volumes. So I cannot give you a precise number on, you know, the response times of an increase or decrease for little particular areas, but I will say that, like I said, it's it was impacted less than I anticipated. And so that's been a positive.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councilmember File.
Thank you, Mayor Baker. Just two more questions, Chief. Well, there's a new ordinance being worked on between Lake Forest Park and Kenmore, I understand, with regards to life preserver use. And I, I understand that there's a little bit concern of who's going to respond on land or water depending on the area and our borders. So with our marine unit, can you explain a little bit about that? Are we, what's the plan for response there and engaging this new ordinance that's coming into effect soon?
So the Lake Forest Park contracts with the sheriff's office as well for the marine unit. So luckily, we have consistency there. We're both basically both, both cities portions of the water of the lake will be patrolled by, by the sheriff's office marine unit. That particular ordinance, just to give some background, Lake Forest Park was considering implementing a requirement that people on all water craft, paddle boards and everything required to wear a life preserver or personal flotation device. And if you didn't, there was a, there kind of graduated system of warning and then eventually like it. It's my understanding, based on what I was told today, that that actually has been tabled for the season. So that's not something Lake Forest Park is going to be implementing this year. Imagine they'll be looking at it again, but what they're talking about doing was going to be more restrictive than state law. And so there, there would have been some confusion, definitely. And would have required some education on their part and probably on our part as well. Moving forward, as we do the improvements that log boom and really spicy a lot more swimming and paddle boarding and whatnot occurring there, you probably have an opportunity for us in the marine unit to really educate people on using those personal flotation devices, even if it's law or not, we'd really like you to wear one. Whether there's an ordinance or not, it's like a seatbelt. I tell people, I want you to wear a seatbelt because it's going to keep you safe and keep you alive, not because the law says you need to. That would be my preference. So probably that educational piece as we're moving forward with the improvements of log boom, probably a good opportunity for that.
I appreciate that. I noticed that they had a recent meeting where they were talking about this ordinance and planning on reaching out within the last week, actually. And the last question I have is, do you notice any trends when the police are starting to become involved with our teens and youth in Kenmore?
Sure. Yeah. And that's something I pulled up, I didn't put in the presentation, but in twenty twenty, we had, I believe it was twelve arrests of juveniles in Kenmore. Eleven of the twelve were for some type of assault. They weren't for anything considered minor. It was a legitimate assault. And fifty percent of the, those arrests and progress were domestic violence related. So that, that tends to be, and it's probably consistent with most jurisdictions, the most common juvenile arrests is domestic violence. Oftentimes, depending on circumstances, it could be required by law. Doesn't necessarily mean a booking is made, it's just an arrest. Sometimes it's just charges being poured to a prosecutor, which is classified as an arrest, even though if physical arrest or physical booking into the youth center it's still coined as an arrest. So I would say that the trends, the trends for juveniles domestic related tends to be the most common.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I just want to respond to the Blake decision chat earlier. So session ended yesterday. And Senate Bill fifty four seventy six was agreed to the House and the Senate, reach a compromise where folks who are picked up on simple possession will get a warning the first two times they're picked up and then, and pointed towards treatment. And then the third time, it's a simple misdemeanor. And I think that this is a step in the right direction, frankly. I would have been happy if they had gone a little bit further, but you know, the war on drugs, in my opinion, having, you know, grown up with Nancy Reagan dare has been, you know, a failure and criminalizing a public health issue certainly hasn't fixed it, as we've seen the past four decades. Simple possession is also been shown to be prosecuted in a very frankly racist way. There's a twenty year study of Washington State prosecutions on simple possession that showed that in almost every county, simple possession was prosecuted in a biased way, in a racially disparate way. And King County sadly actually led the state in how, in the how disconnected, how the, the number of frankly, black the number of frankly, black folks compared to population that were being hit with simple possession charges. And that's a problem when every race uses drugs at about the same level. So I would strongly caution us against going the route of like Marysville and other cities and turning simple possession back into a felony. I recognize there's going to be additional costs to the city, having it be a simple misdemeanor. But I don't think saving us a few bucks and putting that back to the county is a good enough reason to continue the failed war on drugs. A felony can ruin somebody's life and their future. And we have seen the past four decades, five decades, how the war on drugs has been used in a very racially, not necessarily racially motivated, but the impacts and the outcomes have been hit in a very racially disparate way. And as we're working, especially as a city on DEI issues, I think it would be a complete we'd be undoing some of our work if we went that route while we're trying to fix other issue, other issues of systemic racism, because the war on drugs and simple possession is part of institutional racism that we need to start dismantling. So anyway, I just want to give you an update on where things landed with the state. I think there's some state money coming to cities and counties to help with some of that, but it's still, I haven't had a chance to dig into all of the the details, but there, because it's a complicated issue. But I assume that we'll be learning more shortly.
Anybody else? Councilmember Shrubnik?
Yeah, I want to also concur with council member Deputy Mayor Herbig to not pursue any recriminalization of drug possession for all the reasons that he very clearly laid out. That was a very, very thorough. And I also want to reflect on Chief Moe, and this was a great report, great presentation in terms of the PowerPoint. Great responses to questions. You guys are doing an amazing job. No question. An amazing job with a relatively low police to population ratio. There is, you know, research out there and I just want to I, I think we're, I, I think we're doing the right thing with that low ratio. And if you guys are okay with it and seem to be managing it and we still have a low amount of, you know, reported crime, it feels like we're, we're in the right direction. But there, there certainly is research out there that there is more crime where there's more surveillance. And historically, that's been in communities of color. We clearly won't have high rates or surveillance because we simply don't have that many police. So we just can't. So I guess I do have a question in there, which is how much do you feel like the low ratio contributes to that low reporting? Do you feel like there's under reporting? But if not, I, I feel like we're kind of doing the right thing with that low ratio.
Well, I don't know that the low number of officers affects the willingness to report.
Okay.
I guess, I guess what I'm saying is we I think we are very efficient and effective of what we do with what we have. Certainly, we could have more bodies for cities the size of their most jurisdictions will have. Maybe not as effective, like I said, more administrative help. There's, there's other things that a lot of cities will have. I think we pride ourselves and not only Kenmore, but in the sheriff's office in general, but doing more with less. It's kind of been our mantra forever. And so I guess I, I'm quick to point out our staffing when I do these presentations, just to keep expectations to manage expectations as to how, what, what we can accomplish and how many projects we can take on, how much outreach and things we can do. Because oftentimes that's what falls in the wayside. We have to respond when anyone calls and deal with those crimes first, which then requires the patrol officers are out doing that, which limits the other community policing efforts that are going to fall to the wayside because we don't have the resources to do them. So there's, there's given, give and take those things. So.
Thank you. I sure, we sure, I think all of us really appreciate all you're doing. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember File?
Thank you. I noticed that our surrounding cities also have a great interest in either the cahoots model or adding a behavioral mental health specialist or social worker to their staff. I wonder if there is such a trend that we might consider in the future? Or would it be helpful to consider in the future adding a shared such officer with specialties?
Sure. So, and I don't want to step on Brooke's toes. She's going to be presenting here in a minute, but that's very similar to what we're, we're trying to accomplish with radar and shared resources of mental health navigators that are available to all these different agencies. And I'll let her talk about that in a minute in terms of where we think the program, where we like program to go and where we're headed. Some of our partners, Buffalo and Kirkland mainly have through public safety votes, bonds, how do you love these? Have hired time mental health professionals to be with officers or to serve the police department and help the community. That said, they're also involved in radar as well. So it's kind of a multi com approach. We're a little bit smaller than those cities. And so I think it makes a lot of sense for us from just a logistical and financial standpoint to partner, continue partnering with our, with our neighbors and joining, joining source of resources together. But I'll let, I'll let Brooke cover that a little bit more in a minute.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager?
It is to add to Chief's response there. So radar is a coresponder type model where a mental health professional comes on scene with a police officer. Cahoots is not the coresponder. It's where a non-police officer shows up, as you, I'm sure you know, without a police officer. Chief did some research and found out that cahoots is probably about 5% of calls in the Eugene Oregon area, which is, you know, that's one out of 20 calls. So the city managers of the North End are actually going to get together to discuss the possibility of a cahoots type model in the North End. I don't think that the city of Kenmore could do its own cahoots model because our call volume was so, would be so low and we wouldn't be able to justify the cost. But would if we were part of a regional effort like we are with radar, then maybe we could get together and have a cahoots type model chip off 5% of our calls. So we're just exploring that. And I think the meeting with the city managers on that topic is next week.
Great, thank you. Mayor Baker?
Yes?
May I request that we go to recess before moving on?
Yes, let's take five, but let's hold it to five. So let's be back here at nine forty-three.
Thank you.
Brooke, were you able to connect?
Okay, can you hear me?
Oh, yes, I can.
Perfect.
I really apologize. I got a new laptop today and it's, it's brand new. So I don't know why. Oh, and I restarted. So I'm going to have to, I'm going to share my screen and I'm going to have to find the presentation again here. But as I'm I just want to say thank you. Good evening. So great to be here and see everybody. I saw most of you about a year ago when I did a short presentation after Chief Moe's report last April. And so my plan tonight is kind of level set on the program generally and then talk about some of our challenges and what we're looking at forward to in the future. So really, we'll dovetail well with Rob's comments about the the possibility of the cahoots model. Forgive me here, I'm talking and not finding my file. So that I can share my screen. Thanks for your patience. And again, my apologies for the challenges here. All right. So I'm going to talk through again. I'm just going to level set and talk through what the program is and then really spend my time on I'm going to sprinkle some stories throughout to illustrate what it really looks like in the field. And then talk really about the future and kind of what radar looks like moving forward. The basic goals of the program are to reduce use of force, connect people to the community of care and then reduce reliance on the crisis system. Radar is made up.
Brooke, can you pause for one second? Would you unmute on your end?
Yep.
There we go.
So, can you hear me? Could you guys hear nothing of all that? Okay, we'll, we'll get there. Thanks, everybody for your patience. So the five cities, one of the benefits of working together is that we have shared infrastructure, shared costs, shared administrative burden for things like our database, our website, program manager. And also, as we know, folks move across the boundaries. A good example of this is that there is a gentleman in Kenmore that will, for a period of time was frequently showing up at Tadliachi's in Kenmore, but lived in Lake Forest Park. And so the navigators worked with him with both agencies, both departments. And that was a just such a clear example of how our cities are also close together and on the smaller side and really share people and places. Hello? It's not advancing my slides. There we go. So there are two main components to radar. One is the response plan and the information sharing. That's how radar started. It was really to share information to reduce the potential for use of force and to give officers and deputies information going into situations that would allow them to deescalate a situation. And what that looks like is information on what will work with somebody, what might not work as well. I am going to share an example of that. We had a woman in Boffel who recently was involved in a a physical incident where she actually injured an officer. And after a number of encounters with law enforcement and an assessment, an informal assessment with one of our MHP navigators, they created a response plan that included the information that for her instructions needed to be much more simple and that there would be an appearance that instructions were understood, but they may not have been understood. And so that gives officers a tool going in to be much more straightforward and clear with their communication with her. And in the first the first interaction that the officers had with her, they didn't have that information, but as we built information and created the response plan, then in future interactions, they have a better chance of success and successful outcomes with her. The second primary component of the radar program is the MHP social workers. And what we're doing right now is some in progress calls. So when something is happening, if there's a radar navigator on duty, they can go to any of the five cities. And then after the fact, doing response outreach follow-up and then going out into the field and kind of figuring out what's going on for someone and referring them into the community of care so that they're not repeatedly hitting the 911 system. A couple of quick stories or examples that I want to share of an in progress call. There was a I believe this was actually in Kenmore, a gentleman that was on a metro bus that was very disruptive. The navigator went out with the deputy and was able to calm the gentleman down, secure the safety for the other folks that were on the bus, get him to come off the bus and then refer him to the crisis diversion facility, which is a triage and treatment center that can provide some psychiatric assessment, medication, and really get him into an environment where he will get the treatment that he needs. An example of a follow-up being really effective is that the question came up and Chief Moe had talked about young people and behavioral incidents that turn into domestic violence. We've anecdotally seen a lot of that in the last year as kids have been home. We've seen a lot more where we get a referral that a young person has just kind of the pressure cooker has resulted in an outburst and in some cases violence toward a family member. And so we've done a lot of those calls to follow up, check in with the family, see what's going on, what is a good next step, what are some treatment alternatives that we can offer? Because in a lot of those cases, the, the kiddo was not involved in the treatment system previous to the pandemic because their needs were managed within the school or there wasn't such a high pressure environment. So the behavioral issues didn't come to the forefront until they were in their home all the time with their siblings, with their, you know, stepparents, that kind of thing. And we had one case where our navigator followed up with a family that had had a domestic violence call because of a young person. Got that young person hooked up with a specialty program at children. And then in the interim was able to secure them some emergency mental health appointments so that they could see somebody while they were on the waitlist for the the program at children. So I felt like that was a really good outcome. And again, get that family hooked up with the community of care so that they don't need the crisis system. I was training some officers this morning and explaining that we are not really a treatment provider. And the officer said, so you're a middleman. And I thought that was just such a perfect way to describe it, that we are coming into someone's life when the point of crisis hits where in some cases, the, the mental health system or the human services system has failed them and they're falling down below the safety net to the final safety net in our society, which is law enforcement. And then we are able to come in at that point, figure out kind of where they can fit into the treatment system and then ideally not see them again. Because they're getting what they need in that community. So briefly, our funding is, as the chief mentioned, is from MID and from WASPIC. Our funding was included in the current biennium. I always like to thank Councilmember Dombowski, who was really instrumental in getting radar fully funded as a program. I'm going to go through some numbers from 2020 for Kenmore. As the chief mentioned, numbers were lower all over because we were doing less proactive outreach. Although the navigators did pivot really quickly to doing telephonic follow-up and they were able to offer a lot of resources that way for follow-up calls. They also never, the navigators never stopped going on the calls where they were needed. Our navigators worked as just as law enforcement did straight through the pandemic. They got PPE early on through our law enforcement partnership and continued to do the work that they were doing. So we had 32 individuals served in a total of 56 encounters. That just goes to illustrate that in some cases it'll be a single, maybe even a single phone call with a family to say, this is what your, your resources are to to hook up with a mental health provider or substance use disorder provider. And in some cases, it's many, many visits to get the person from where they are to where they're hoping to be. In one case, we had a gentleman who has many, many contacts with 911 from himself, from driving while intoxicated, himself calling 911, other folks in his small community calling 911. And a navigator worked with him on multiple visits with him and with his sister to secure a bed in substance use disorder treatment facility. And that, that can take some time, but that was the next step that he needed. And so the navigator will stick with it until the person is kind of handed off to the, the treatment system. Some participant demographics, caveat is that our data is not excellent. We have a new database system that we are beta testing right now that we are it will start in January of 2021 where we will have better data and be more able to kind of dig into it and see what's going on. But I can tell you for the Kenmore, the folks that we saw in Kenmore, 16% were living homeless. 63% reported a disabling behavioral health condition. And the way that we quantify that is that it's a a behavioral health diagnosis that impacts two or more domains of daily life. I had a question from Councilmember File about these numbers and how they compare to other cities. And all I really would say about that is that I wouldn't read too much into small, to differences between Kenmore's members and other cities members. Because the numbers are so low, I don't think it's statistically significant to, to compare. For example, the 16% living homeless that, that doesn't necessarily say that there's a higher homeless population in Kenmore. That just may be kind of a fluke of the numbers and the way the referrals come through, just because numbers are so small. And my N on that analysis is often less than the total number of people that were served because sometimes we don't have the data. So it's the, this is the best we have and it does help us to kind of forecast and, and monitor trends. So it's the, this is the best we have and it does help us to kind of forecast and monitor trends. But I wouldn't be too concerned with how it compares with other cities, just because of the small numbers, if that makes sense. One point I did want to make is that in Kenmore, there was a small number of folks that have, that identified as military veterans. There was no, there were no homeless veterans. So that's a positive value noted, that none of the veterans that we served were living homeless. I do want to point out the racial breakdown because that's something we monitor very closely. There is some, there's research to indicate that diversion programs will often tend to serve white people more than BIPOC folks. And that once you have a diversion program, you get even greater levels of disproportionality of people of color in the criminal legal system because white people tend to be funneled to the diversion or to a mental health program rather than to jail or to no diversion. And I am happy to say that in North King County, radar, our demographics really closely mirror regionally and then by city. But it's something that we'll continue to watch. And I also would like to do, in the future, do deeper analysis of whether white people tend to get more visits, for example, or tend to be more likely to be, have long-term tenure in services, once they're hooked into services. So that's all things that I'm hopeful we can do with our, our new database system and just for equity and social justice where we are monitoring that very closely. So Kahoots was brought up a couple of times. Radar is one type of model of a social work response, an alternative to a law enforcement response to behavioral health and social service challenges. And so I'm really glad to be able to respond to some of those questions and to Rob's comment about piloting a Kahoots model. I would really caution the council to be thoughtful about the investment that you've already made in this community, in the radar program. Something like the Kahoots model is, I think, 25 or 27 years old. They've had plenty of time to develop protocols, to hire, to get to where they're able to send people out. That's something that I foresee and the chiefs foresee for the radar program within the next few years. And I would, I would caution you to be careful about starting from scratch with something when we already have, you know, half a million dollars and three years invested in the infrastructure, the staffing, the policies and procedures of a program that could, given adequate support, could become very similar to what Kahoots offers. A couple of primary differences to the Kahoots model, since it seems to be kind of on everyone's mind. Kahoots is a, an independent mental health agency that's providing the service. And there are kind of two ways to approach social work services within police departments. One is really embedding them and making social workers municipal employees. And the other is contracting with an agency. And both have their pluses and minuses, and I just want to say a few things about the two models. One challenge of having a, a, one, a challenge of the mental health agency is that there is not that information sharing that, because they're, they are a HIPAA-protected entity and are not able to share health information or protected health information, you would not get that tool like the radar response plan where officers get some information going into a situation with somebody that's known to us. That kind of sharing is, is less possible. A good piece of that is that they have a built-in, they are a health provider, so they have a full built-in infrastructure about how to provide health services. In the case of Kahoots, they also have this tremendous benefit of having a crisis triage center that we have in King County, a really small number of beds. So that's something I always also want to advocate for is that we increase new treatment to crisis beds for folks with behavioral health. And then, of course, affordable housing and addressing the homelessness crisis. But that's kind of a side note. To continue to discuss the different models, there are, then when you have municipal employees, a benefit for that is that a municipal job is much easier to hire for. And I think going into the, to kind of forecast the trend, it's going to be harder and harder to find social workers that will do this. Everybody's kind of snapping them up. Every police department, every agency in the county is thinking about how to bring social work services in. So to be competitive, it is nice to have municipal jobs. Right now, we're offering contracted positions, which is a little less competitive, so that's a challenge for us. But there's, there's just a lot of nuance in what works best for individual cities, individual regions. Another kind of breakdown of the way you can do the model, the Kahoots, again, is the, is an agency. Seattle Police Department contracts with an agency as well. In Olympia, it's an agency that they're contracting with. And then there are a number of places that do it. Internally Everett, Paul's Bow. I can speak more to that if there's, if people have more questions. But then within having municipal employees, you can also embed them either in the police department or within the human services department of a city. That's for larger cities, obviously, that have a robust human services department that can accept and manage employees. So that's a lot of information. I would love to talk more about kind of what the different models are. There are a lot of people beginning to have these conversations and there are a number of people that have, or agencies that have been doing it for a few years that would probably have some good thoughts. And the near to midterm future for radar, the way that looks is my primary daily focus is recruiting and hiring navigators. And it's a challenge to find folks that have that background, that have that willingness, that have the temperament for crisis, community-based crisis work and these dynamic situations, especially for in-progress calls that are not necessar, they're definitely securing the scene for our civilian navigators, but it's not, it's a dynamic scene and it's not necessarily going to be, feel as safe as an office-based visit. So it's, you know, you've got to find the right, the right people that have the right kind of, I call it a snappiness, that can go out into the field and do good work. So building our coverage, creating more immediate access, and then ultimately, as we build that infrastructure dispatching directly to the field. A couple of models that the chiefs have thrown around for this are like the chaplain model, where there's always a chaplain available on call. It would, for navigators to be dispatched directly, we would have to invest in fleet. And, you know, there, there would be additional costs, obviously. But that is kind of the direction that the chiefs see this program going, and there's definitely call for that from officers. A couple, Councilmember File asked me to speak on some of the challenges that we foresee coming in the future. There is the eviction moratorium. Being listed is probably going to lead to an increase in homelessness. Shelters are already full. I'm talking to folks, to colleagues that are working in major health systems. Major health systems are all preparing for a huge wave of increase in mental health symptoms in the next few years from, stemming from the pandemic. And so I anticipate that we will see that as well. And then an ongoing challenge, I think, for us and for all programs like this is going to continue to be staffing because this is not a niche of social work that you get education on in the way that maybe hospital social work is or direct practice therapy. And so part of our work is going to be to build this as a profession, to collaborate with our partners across the region and across the US to, to create the kind of trainings that we need for this and to find the right people to do this type of work. Especially, as I said, if everybody's trying to do this, not just police agencies, but firefight, fire agencies as well. And so every time I see a municipal position go up, I go, "Oh, there goes my next candidate to another agency." But, but we are going to continue to recruit and. Oh, I, there was one other story I wanted to share, and that is of our, just speaking of fire, of our collaboration with fire up here in North King County. So there's a mobile integrated health unit that is staffed with social workers that do real similar work to what our navigators do. And they are very good and very specialized in working with folks that have health conditions that are not acute enough to go to the hospital and with older adults. They do see a lot of behavioral health as well. But we are building a partnership with them and just recently, I just happened to be on a phone call with the MIH, the Mobile Integrated Health Social Workers, about an individual that they said, "You know, you're going to start seeing him." I know he's already had a few police calls. This is at a shoreline address. And they're going to see more and more because this young man is beginning to have a lot more symptoms and he's expressing some thoughts to us that are, you know, that are troubling. While we were on the phone, they toned out that they had called for him and it ended up that law enforcement had been sent because it was a safety issue. And I was able to connect the, kind of connect the dots with what law enforcement was doing. And the mobile integrated health social workers that knew him well recommended a hospital that he'd be involved to where they had adequate treatment, an excellent first episode psychosis program. That in my mind, just knowing the way that that, kind of the trajectory goes from my years of experience as a social worker, could be a really life-changing intervention for this person. That going to the right hospital, having a social worker that knows what the right hospital is, knows kind of a little bit of his history and gets him to where he'll get longer-term treatment could really change the outcome of his life and research supports that early intervention for psychosis is really important. So I thought that was just a good story of collaborating across agencies and across cities. And so that's what I'll close with and take any questions that folks have.
Questions?
Councilmember File? Or, I'm sorry, Mayor.
So, okay, anybody else? Councilmember File has asked a bunch of questions already. I want to make sure everybody else has a chance. Councilmember Shrubnik.
Hey, Brooke. It's good to see you. So, just a couple of things. And, you know, I think, I love radar and I, and I potentially love Kahoots and I do see them as different. And I just, you know, the, the most significant difference I see is that, you know, there, that Kahoots is not a ride-along. You know, it's not a co-response. It's a, it's a separate response that, you know, potentially, you know, could reduce the number, you know, maybe only by 5% of the, the contacts that law enforcement has with, with the community. But, so it is a little different. I see it as both and. I don't, you know, they're, they're simply different. And anyway, so I'm kind of excited about, you know, investigating both of these and kind of seeing where they go. And, and the one about your presentation, which I thought was great. So I was curious, you know, it was about, you know, in 2020, it was, you know, relatively low numbers and I'm not remembering off the top of my head in terms of 2019, how that, you know, might relate. I was curious if you remember off the top of your head, you know, the, the numbers for that. And then the other piece was around the racial breakdown. And yeah, the 89% white is probably representative of the population of those communities as a whole. But I guess I would be, I'm not sure that that's the right comparator. I mean, we may want to have the arrest demographics or the police, law enforcement contact demographics as the comparator because we know those are quite different typically than the, than the population as a whole. So that's just something to think about. But yeah, it's great.
Thank you. Yeah, that, that is really, really smart. That is going to take a little more maturity from our program to be able to do that, I think, but that, that's exactly the kind of feedback that we need. So thank you. I appreciate that. And I, I know exactly what you mean, that the criminal justice population might not mirror. We know does not mirror the general population, so. And in terms of 2020, 2019 numbers, I don't know off the top of my head I can send, but I actually don't think the Kenmore numbers are that low. I think that we're gradually growing as we have staffing. I'm, I'm very satisfied with what Kenmore did. The only thing limiting Kenmore last year, other than the pandemic, was that there's just so, their law enforcement staffing is so bare-bones that they're almost always at minimum and so it can be a challenge to have an officer to go out with a, with a navigator. And so sometimes that means some follow-up is telephonic right now. We don't have protocols in place for navigators to go out without law enforcement, but that's something that's in the works and that will help for our small city Kenmore, where staffing's not always available.
Beautiful. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember File?
Thank you, Mayor Baker. You know what? I would like to also see in the demographic analysis breakdown is age. We see race, we see, see the type of response. We don't see age. I think age does matter. So we have a better understanding of are there pocket issues, are there broad issues? This is important in understanding the kind of responses we need to be aware about in working with our surrounding regional and state electeds when navigating for and advocating on behalf of program needs.
Yeah, thank you.
Deputy Mayor, did I see you? Anybody else? Any other questions? I don't see any. Ms. Futner, thank you very much.
Thank you. And again, my apologies for the technical difficulties, but thanks for bearing with me. And thanks to Chief Moen for just being a wonderful partner to work with and same with the deputies that have been very great to work with. So thanks, everybody.
Thank you very much. Staff report, safety in public meetings update. The police chief, Brandon Moen, is back with us.
I think I've talked enough tonight, so I will be very brief here. So I just wanted to give a brief update on the city council meeting safety plan that we discussed back at the council retreat. Something that was brought up that we wanted to take a look at. I'm currently developing a proposal that contains a number of safety considerations and options. My intent is for this not to be shared publicly, to kind of maximize the effectiveness of the measures, kind of the whole purpose. So this panel will detail kind of the current safety measures and conditions, kind of the current existing conditions, and then offer potential intermediate safety measures and potential advanced safety measures. My intent is to write a range of measures for consideration with kind of a scaled effect from minimal change from current conditions to more pronounced and obvious measures. Rather than just making a straight-out proposal, this is what I think I should be trying to give you a range. Example of this scaled range, just to give you an idea. They could vary from things such as a council procedure or policy on how to undeal, how to deal with unruly attendees all the way to the regular presence of a uniformed officer, just to throw a couple of things out there. I hope to have a draft proposal of options for you in the coming months, hopefully well in advance of your return to in-person meetings, whenever that ends up being. So certainly work in progress and something that I hope to have for you in the near future.
Thank you, chief. Facilitating downtown redevelopment along 181st Street update. Mr. Hampson?
Good evening, council and mayor. I probably remember at the retreat, you asked us to get in touch with some of the property owners along 181st to see if we can spark any kind of interest in redeveloping that street specifically between 73rd and 67th. So a few of us have been meeting with some of the property owners along that stretch. And we currently don't have any great news to report back to you that any of them are right now interested in redeveloping at this point. One of the, you know, reasons, of course, is the pandemic and waiting for this to, to shake out before getting started. And also the cost of construction, you can, is really high right now, so it's not really a good time to build. But yeah, we're going to continue to talk to the property owners and try to convince them and persuade them into redeveloping 181st. And as I mentioned in my memo, sometimes it's cheaper for people to leave their properties vacant because of the tax situation. But yeah, I'm just reporting back with you, let you know what's going on with this and we'll continue to talk to property owners. And if we do get any willing redevelopers, we'll, we'll report back to you.
Yes, Councilmember Shrubnik.
Oh, thank you, Brian. This is, you know, an interest of mine. I'm passionate about it, like others are passionate about other things. And I, you know, I really appreciate your efforts and I hope you don't give up. And, you know, there was one comment that I just wanted to make about one of the things in the report. The issue of, you know, of course, it's cheaper to let the, in terms of tax, to let it sit. But I mean, if you think about it, if a property is developed, of course, the taxes are going to go up, but the income is going to hugely offset that. So I mean, it's, I, I, I think that's kind of a funny, I wouldn't stress about that. And if that's the person's barrier, I think helping them kind of see the bigger picture of, you know, what's the better investment? Letting something sit and have cheaper taxes or developing it and making a lot more money? I mean, if it's a money issue, that, that seems self-evident, but. I mean, if it's a money issue, that, that seems self-evident. But anyway, it's just me.
Anybody else? Councilmember File?
Thank you. I thank you, Mr. Brian Hanson. I really appreciate your update today. I, like Councilmember Shrubnik, do also hope that you continue to push and work with this work ahead. I think it's important to our community to be able to develop this area and in a meaningful way. You know, interest rates are low now. You know, even holding on to a property, it would probably be better than letting it sit while, and then purchasing later when interest rates are higher. So I, I hope that we continue to work towards some sort of mutual agreement that works. So thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Anybody else? Seeing no one else. Thank you, Mr. Hampson. Really appreciate your, your update. Mr. Carlinsey?
Nothing else, Your Honor.
Nothing else. All right, Council. Reports and comments. Councilmember O'Keane?
I do have a comment or a report out. I was a member of the North King County Housing Task Force. And I think we're all aware that the state of Shoreline was able to successfully find a shelter. But what with this work on the council, I mean, on this task force, we have, we do see that there's continued work to do on homelessness in North King County. So we are forming or we are looking to form the North King County Coalition on Homelessness. And we'll be working with the cities. So our cities are, just to state it, Shoreline, Lake Forest Park, Kenmore, Bothell, and Woodenville. And the intention is for the coalition to work across sectors and jurisdictions in North King County in support of policies and community-based efforts to provide services, shelter, and/or permanent housing solutions for those in our communities who are experiencing homelessness. And this is the key part. We anticipate that the coalition will ultimately serve as a sub-regional hub for the King County Regional Homelessness Authority. So as we are coming together and creating this coalition, we'll, they'll be bringing forward a memorandum of agreement to, to make this happen. So I just wanted to put this on everyone's radar so that you know that this is likely up and coming. And it's really a great team that's working on the North King County now Coalition on Homelessness. And I'm really looking forward to the good work that we can do together. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Marshall?
Little update on the North Shore Parks Recreation Service area, the North Shore Senior Center. We have partnered or joined in with the city of Everett in terms of sharing contracting expenses and assignments. And also the Parks and Service Recreation Area is hiring an on-call architect to be overseeing the improvements, expecting improvements for the North Shore Senior Center. There's a lot of, a lot of issues on that. So that's definitely moving forward. And then I just wanted to ask Deputy Mayor, if during his time, he could hit very briefly, but if he could hit, did the, did that bill on the misdemeanor drug use, is that headed to the governor's desk? And then was there anything done on landlord tenant? Thank you.
You want that right now or when it comes to me? Sorry.
No, why?
Whatever the, whatever the mayor decides. Okay.
Everybody's mind.
I'm sorry, what was that, Mr. Mayor?
Why don't you go ahead and do it now while it's fresh in everybody's mind?
Okay, I'm just going off the top of my head right now. So I may not have everything put together. Yes, the Dingra bill on simple possession is going to the governor's desk. It got agreed to by, by both chambers. There was a Cooter bill. Hang on, let me dig it up. There was a Cooter bill on landlord tenant. I had it in front of me earlier. And it's another one that there's a lot of moving, moving parts. So I don't know all of the ins and outs on it off the top of my head. Yeah, Senate Bill sixty, fifty-one, sixty. It originally started guaranteeing legal representation for people that were going through evictions. It looks like it expanded a bit to add some more protections. I believe it may kind of intersect a little bit with what I brought up last week around payment plans and that sort of thing. But again, there's a lot of moving pieces in it, and I haven't had a chance to actually read the bill because it was getting amended so much right up to the last second. So there may be some intersection there with the, oh, there may be an intersection there with the, with what I brought up last week. But I, I need to do some more digging into it to.
Get passed at all? Or do we know, did it, did some form of it go to governor?
Yeah, yeah. It was delivered, it was signed by the governor, partially vetoed on the twenty-second. What parts did you veto? I don't know.
He vetoed sections twelve and thirteen.
Yeah, I'm not sure what they.
It was just the landlord assistance.
Okay, okay. But yeah, the rest of it is there. But again, I, I'm not completely up to speed on everything that made it into the final version of that bill because there was a lot of different versions floating around for a while. So.
Deputy Mayor, on the possession and the work we did, it was going to be a gross misdemeanor. It got settled on a misdemeanor, but wasn't it tied to the transportation bill? That after two years, it would go away if the transportation bill was not passed?
I don't know about a tie to the transportation bill. I did hear something about it being two years. And that may just be time for them to work out something more in depth. Because the legislature was kind of, the Supreme Court ruling kind of happened in the middle of legislative session. So the legislators, legislature's ability to tackle a complex issue like that, they're really under the gun on it to, there weren't a lot of pressure to get something done by the end of the session. So I don't, I did hear there was something related to a two-year timeout on it. I don't, I can't imagine why it'd be tied to transportation, but who knows? I would have to look into that. I honestly don't off the top of my head.
Stranger things have happened.
Yeah, that would be, that would be a particularly bizarre one, but I wouldn't put it past the Senate Transportation Chair to try to somehow tie it on there to get his package through at some point. So.
Councilmember Shrubnik? Or no, Councilmember Kugler?
Just one quick reminder, because we talked about this several meetings ago. The Sound Transit Realignment Survey is open until April thirtieth. So just a reminder to anyone watching that, you know, go on there, submit your comments in the hopes that we can keep bus rapid transit going through Kenmore. That's it. Thank you.
All right. Now, Councilmember Shrubnik?
I have a few things. One is a reminder to everybody to vote if you haven't, Prop one. And our position is clear from previous minutes and in the Sunday Seattle Times. And just a reminder that we did get a very nice legislative report from our folks about what happened this session. So if you have questions about bills, that's the place to look first. There's a lot of detail about what we just talked about. And two reports, I did attend, and I think maybe others did, the Lake Forest Park Climate Summit on Saturday. And they had a great short film, a number of presentations that were very, very good. One brief film that I thought was relevant was on the King County Marymore Park Public Works Facility that is actually beyond net zero. It is actually G that it consumes. I thought it was an amazing example, given that we are embarking on that issue. There was a presentation by Seattle Zero Waste, which is actually beyond Seattle. And I thought their materials and what they put out there could be very useful for individual community member behavior change. They had a lot of great ideas. There was also a good presentation by, I believe, the same person that presented to us from Republic Services. Again, a lot of materials that I think will be great in our community PR efforts around climate change and sustainable environmental stewardship. The other report is a one-on-one that I had with the county's FBRAP two, which is the eviction prevention rental assistance program that is, you know, renewed with the new rescue package. The, or anyway, the new coronavirus package, not the infrastructure package. And so just a couple of things on that. They actually are launching either, they either did today or will tomorrow, their large landlord program, which is the landlords that have over five units where renters, tenants are in arrears, rental arrears. And they'll have a period of time to upload their information about those properties. The individual tenant component will go live fairly soon, within the next two, three weeks. And they do believe that the money will be flowing in advance of the moratorium expiration cliff at the end of June. It will initially be the same kind of lottery, although a lot more money available than it was before. But the program will run three to five years. So it will long outlast the shift to the lack of a frank eviction moratorium. And so there's that. They expect the amount per tenant to about double compared to the first wave of funding. Whereas it was about four thousand average before, they expected to be eight to ten, because they've closed a lot of the gaps. So for example, they can actually pay for three months of future rent. And the person doesn't need to be in arrears already. They just have to show that they are not able presently to pay the rent. And those were significant issues in the first round. So a lot fewer gaps. And they weren't sure the role of the cities, but, oh, and Mobile Home Park. People who own their unit but rent their pad in Mobile Home Parks are eligible. They were eligible in the first version, but we saw very few applicants. So that's another way we could, as a city, get the word out. So that's something to be aware of. Other roles for the city are, you know, certainly in PR. And there, it's a little unclear. I think Rob maybe is going to brief us at some point on what Commerce is going to allow cities to use the funds for and whether we need to apply for some of the funds. I'm, this person I was speaking with wasn't unclear, was a little less clear about the city's role. There was one other piece other than promotion that she was sure about, and that is utility, what she was kind of calling utility only. When utilities are part of the rental, the monthly rental package as part of the lease that the tenant pays, those can be covered with the county program that is part of the agreement with Commerce. But when utilities are paid to a third party outside of the lease agreement, they are not covered. So that's an area that the city could support with City Cares Act dollars. I guess it's not Cares Act, but whatever it is, the new money. So that's my report.
All right. Councilmember File?
Thank you, Mayor Baker. Had a very fun couple of weeks helping out our community and working together with surrounding partners. This last week, I helped at an event supported by the NCIP, which helps get farm boxes to families supported by Kenmore Community Church and our firefighters who helped load all those boxes, fourteen hundred boxes into cars, feeding a great number of families here just this last Thursday. I also did a site visit with ERC, with Environmental Education Resource Center at St. Edwards. It's coming along beautifully. It's great to see how that project's moving along. Republic Services had a small recycling kind of event at St. Edward State Park a couple of weeks ago. And I attended with fellow councilmember Angela Krueger. And that was lovely. It's great to see how building partnerships within our, our borders helps benefit the, the surrounding projects and growth that's happening here in Kenmore. Gee. Looking at, I did this last weekend, I took a parliamentary update with the National Parliamentarians Association that Ann McFarland was giving a good training in front of, a good hours of training, which was great. What did highlight is a number of issues that will probably come before us down the road and how we might correct some parliamentary errors that commonly take place frequently. And I did attend a National League of Cities update on the American Recovery Plan. And part of that, a sixth meeting was a comment based on direct funds to, to community. And that's an interest across this, the US in different cities and municipalities. Yet they're going back to the US Treasurer to see how or if that can occur. And there does look to be options for municipal recovery or for due to loss of impact fees and whatnot. So it'll be interesting to see what comes forward. There's a lot more to happen. Mayor Baker and I have been taking a three-month course with Arizona University with National League of Cities on human-centered approaches. And we are just finishing that up. We actually graduate from that certificate program on Thursday. And it's been a lovely opportunity to expand on humanistic and human-centered approaches for leading in municipalities and with our, our partners. So that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, that class is actually with American University, not Arizona University. So.
Say Arizona University?
Deputy Mayor?
I'm tired.
Nothing really to add. I did actually flip through the forty-five pages of the bill that, and there is no type of the transportation budget. There is sections that do expire July first, twenty twenty-three, which is two years from the effective date. And I can't tell you what's in all those sections off, you know, just looking at this now. But I guess that's kind of a prompt for the legislature to make a more thoughtful fix at a later date. So anyway, that's, yeah.
So five minutes is not enough time?
No, it's not enough time to read through a forty-five page bill. And because, you know, usually when, when I'm doing this work, there are these nice little staff summaries that they put together. But once they get past the point where they're going through committees, they stop doing that. And so then you get to the final bill that's been agreed to by everybody, and all you have is the bill. And I can't read through to, you know, the, I don't have a nice summary by our nonpartisan staff. So anyway, that's all I got.
All right. So as everybody knows, session is over. And if you have the opportunity, you really need to thank our legislators. I don't think unless you're involved, like the deputy mayor is on a day-to-day basis, to see how hard they really work. And, and we have got three really great legislators that are really watching out for their communities. I mean, with Valdez and Palet and Senator Frocht, they have done so much for us over the years. This past session, because of Palet and Valdez, there's three hundred and twenty seven thousand for walkways and waterways to help out in squires lending to help us get get through that. Senator Froch put us in really good shape for three point five million. It was nine hundred and twenty seven thousand, sorry. Senator Froch put us in really good shape for three and a half million for sixty first and at a street and our sidewalk replacements. Unfortunately, they need to act enact a transportation bill first. But if they do, we are in really, really good position to get that three point five million. So if you have an opportunity, thank them for all they do to the city, because they they do an awful lot for the for us. Upcoming stuff. Next meeting is on May tenth. And if there's no new further business to come before us, we're adjourned. Thank you, folks.
Night, everyone.
Good night. Bye. Thank you.
Good night. Good night.